Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of February 17, 2021. Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. On March 4, Governor Newsom declared the state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. The governor also passed several executive orders, including the suspension of some components of the Brown Act related to public meetings such as this. Therefore, seating in the chamber is limited tonight. As such, Councilmember Freeman is participating by phone, and all council votes tonight will be conducted by roll call. And at this time, Nick Fidler, Director of Public Works, will offer the invocation. Following the invocation, Kristi Tenter, Human Resources Manager, will lead us in the pledge. Would you all please stand?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember, and Vice Mayor. Heavenly Father, Lord, be come before you to give us protection for this day and for it. We thank you for the blessings you have provided for our community through the natural resources and enable our city to grow and provide for our residents. We thank you for the rain and snow, Lord, that provide the much-needed water for our community and surrounding agriculture areas. We pray for that continue to provide rain through this season to replenish our resources. Father, there are several families and communities struggling through this pandemic. I pray that you are with them, comfort them, and provide the resources they need. I pray you continue to give our city stability during these challenging times. Lord, I pray for the leaders of our city. I pray that you give them the wisdom to address the needs of our community and the decisions that they need to make tonight of your will. I thank you for this opportunity to acknowledge your presence in our community, and I ask that your guidance is with us during this meeting. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. And for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting only, but not during other portions of the meeting. And please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first item?
Under Presentations, proclamation to the Safely Surrender Baby Coalition, declaring Safe Surrender Baby Awareness Month in Bakersfield during February 2021.
Well, good evening, colleagues. It's my pleasure to be joined by Janice Legel, as Chair of the Safely Surrendered Baby Coalition, and Roland Meyer, who's the Executive Director of First Five Kern. It's amazing that we have 84 babies since 2006 who have been saved, creating the possibility of future doctors, lawyers, teachers, and leaders in our community. The Coalition has worked very hard to educate our community and help decrease the number of newborn infant deaths statewide due to an abandonment of unsafe locations. And we are so privileged to have a small group of super-hard-working organizations, including First Five Kern, Kern County Public Health, and both the Bakersfield and Kern County Fire Departments. And so it is my honor tonight to be able to issue this proclamation. The Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, California, has officially proclaimed February 2021 as Safely Surrendered Baby Awareness Month in our city. In recognition of the Safely Surrendered Baby Coalition and its efforts to provide a safe alternative for newborn babies to be safely surrendered, in recognition of the partnership of government nonprofit organizations, private businesses, and residents that are committed to providing places of sanctuary for these babies, in recognition of the need to heighten public awareness regarding this issue and the need to provide a safe refuge for the innocent newborns involved, in recognition of the eight infants safely surrendered in 2020, and in recognition of the 84 precious infants safely surrendered since the program's inception in Kern County in 2006. And it's signed Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield. It's my honor to be able to present this to Janice Legel and to Mr. Meyer.
Thank you very much.
And please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Go, and members of the City Council. My name is Janice Legel, and as Ms. Go said, I represent the Kern County Department of Human Services, and I chair the Safely Surrendered Baby Coalition. And since we presented the information to you, we have had one additional safely surrendered baby, making the total 85 since 2006. So Mr. Meyer and First Five Kern have graciously provided funding for our program to be continued to be made aware in the community, so we thank him and First Five Kern. We appreciate you sharing this important law with our community, and we hope that people get the message that there is no need to abandon a baby with a law like Safe Surrender. The law also allows the person surrendering to return for the baby within 14 days if the situation changes. And since 2006, there have been nine babies that have been reclaimed, showing that the law is working and people are aware. So we thank you again for proclaiming 2021 as Safely Surrendered Baby Awareness Month in the City of Bakersfield, and we hope that it continues to provide a safe option for a woman in crisis. Thank you.
Jenna, Mr. Meyer.
I'm good.
You're good.
I'm quiet today.
Let's take a photo. Where is our photographer? Mrs. Chin, or somebody snap one for us?
Karen, you want to get between us here?
Yeah. Yours is important.
I am smiling.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Public Statements.
Thank you. This meeting has limited public access. Therefore, public comments were encouraged to be made to the city clerk through email or by phone call. If you're here in person to make a public statement, please fill out a speaker card and give it to the city clerk. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. And if you're here to speak on the workshop item, or hearing item 10A, or new business items 10A, or 13A, or 13B, we ask that you speak after staff's presentations on those matters. We're very interested and concerned with your issues, however, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Again, please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting, such as repetitive statements or going over the three-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
We have two public speakers speaking on separate subjects. The first is Mr. Troy Hightower.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is Troy Hightower, and the council members, and the new council member Gray and city manager. I just have a brief request. During the first round of Measure N, there was to be a streetlight study done for, I believe, an amount of $100,000. And so I'd like to know what's the status of that study.
Thank you, Mr. Hightower. Staff, can you please follow up with him on that issue? Thank you, Mr. Hightower.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
We have Mr. Michael Harless.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself, and would you raise the mic a little, please?
Hi, my name is Michael Harless, and I brought this up last month in the City Council Meeting about the Get Bus. They're trying to do away with the night service permanently, and so far, me myself, I would say, has already gotten over 80 signatures saying that we need night service, as well as there's other people doing it as well, and we're going to be turning it in at the beginning of the month, saying that we do need night service, and I'm kind of nervous.
That's okay. We all get nervous. Go ahead.
But we need night service because people cannot get home. They can't get home from entertainment activities, getting home from work, from school, or meetings that they attend in the evening time. They can get there on time at night, but they can't get home. So we need our night service.
Thank you, Mr. Harless.
Okay. Also, there's a bus stop right there on Brundage Union that needs to be repaired. So.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, any others? That's for right now. Okay, next item, please.
Under Workshops, Workforce Development and Innovation Lab Update.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. It's exciting to bring this topic forward to you. The city has been working on a concept in development for some time. You're not taking a vote on this item tonight, but wanted to daylight this cooperative public-private partnership that we've been pursuing. And actually, to just give a little bit of context, it's been a particular goal of mine to collaborate well with the County of Kern, and County Administrator Ryan Alisoff and myself have had many productive conversations about areas we have shared interests. Early in that process, one of those shared interests was around the use of data analytics and problem-solving through technology. And from that was born a partnership to say, how do we build out our technology and entrepreneurship capacity in this region and in this metro area to better address the needs that we have? And maybe instead of trying to build government departments to get at data analytics and technology development, was there a public-private partnership approach that could be used to solve some of those challenges? As we surveyed some of the partners in the region, I would say respectfully and admittedly, there was some challenges in being able to deliver on some of that across the board, and so we sought out those who could bring that capacity forward. And so you see up on the screen today, Bitwise Industries has been in conversation with city and county for a few months now about how we could create a technology and entrepreneurship innovation lab. This concept would be where we would bring in individuals who would receive training, and they would create business plans and create their own startups. And we would then be able to, as city-county, leverage both that economic development, as well as ask them to solve some of our challenging problems and put them to the test through this innovation lab and incubation lab concept. Before I go too much further into this, we actually have Amy Thielen, Vice President of Bitwise, who's on Zoom with us, was not able to provide a presentation to us in person, but is actually going to walk us through some images of the new building that's here in downtown, and the concept of the cohorts that they've done this successfully with in Fresno, and that we're building this entrepreneurship and tech lab cohort concept is built somewhat around the successes that they've had in Fresno, but tailored to our specific needs and our specific community. And so we'll turn time over to Ms. Thielen to walk through her presentation first, and then we may see if Mr. Alisoff wants to say a few comments in this partnership, and then see if there's any questions from council.
Welcome, Ms. Thielen.
Thank you, Mayor Go, and thank you, City Manager Clegg. I would like to start, before I jump into this, and I want to be respectful of everybody's time, but for anybody listening in or viewing, I want to make sure I give just a brief description of what Bitwise Industries is outside of this public-private partnership we've created. So I'll make this very brief, and then we'll jump right in. So really, Bitwise Industries is an entire tech ecosystem that creates a bridge, really, between humans from marginalized communities and stories of systemic poverty to skills and resources kind of really necessary to access opportunities in the tech industry. So by leveraging these public-private partnerships, Bitwise has been able to provide paid internships to students to learn tech skills, really connect them to meaningful tech opportunities, and build really these vibrant buildings in underestimated cities to house their work. And when I say underestimated, it's a very loving, we also say underdog cities. I'm born and raised here. It's a very loving term for really non-traditional tech towns. So by really upskilling the disenfranchised community members, we really empower our community to, or community members, to change their own lives, which we all know in turn ignites and really kind of transforms regional economics across the cities that Bitwise lands in. So that's kind of an overall picture of Bitwise. If you have an opportunity on YouTube, check out Irma Olgin Serendipity. She's our CEO, and it gives the whole reason why Bitwise exists. And if we had more time, I'd go into that. I want to paint a picture of what this public-private partnership looks like, and I can do that by showing a quick, it's a little over four-minute video, almost five-minute video, actually. I want to know if I need to share that, or I believe I sent it in. Do you need me to share my screen and start that, or?
The Clerk's going to be able to do that, Ms. Thielen.
Okay. So let's share that, and that'll give you, oh, that's the, yeah, presentation. So what you guys are going to be viewing here in a second is a video we created from a very similar concept that we did in Fresno, although it didn't involve city government. So we didn't involve the county or the city in Fresno, which is what we're looking to do here. But let's watch this video, and then we can pause after that.
Erin. Erin Kennedy, we might need some tech support.
If, Mayor Go, if I'm able to share my screen, I'm happy to do so too. I have it pulled up, but that's, I don't know if that'll work best for viewers.
We have some tech support coming right now. We have it up, but no sound at this point. So more tech support is coming.
Okay.
If you have any comments you'd like to offer while they are doing that, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, it's a very powerful video. If we can't get it up, it's not a problem. I can walk everybody through it. I just thought it would paint a very good picture, and again, I want to be respectful of time here. So let's just assume that we're not going to be able to get it to play. If we do, great. What we did in Fresno, at Bitwise Headquarters, which Bakersfield is the second expansion city to Bitwise Fresno, and what we did in partnership with some private partners like Google and other kind of big tech companies, was created a founders cohort. And it took, and we called it the non-traditional founders cohort. And we called it that because, again, we focused very much on marginalized, underrepresented populations to come in and say, hey, you have ideas, maybe you just haven't been given the opportunity to seed money to, you know, the whole path of entrepreneurship, to be taught, how do I start a business? How do I create a pitch deck? How do I do all of these things that I've seen others do, and maybe get and had access to be able to do? And these stories are just overwhelmingly fantastic. They created, you know, these 10 people that were part of this founders cohort, created products that have now been, some of them have been purchased by other companies, some have been started in Fresno and created jobs for other people in Fresno. One of them was actually purchased by RE/MAX, the, you know, one of the larger realtors, realty companies. So that is similar to what we are looking to do here, except we are looking to do it in a private-public partnership with the city and the county and Bitwise. And what we want to do is have, on a yearly basis, three different cohorts of eight members. We have instructors that are leading these courses, teaching workforce development, teaching entrepreneurships, giving people the ability to bring a new industry, you know, not a traditional industry we've seen here in Kern County and the City of Bakersfield, and start companies from the ground up. We'll have entrepreneurs teaching these cohorts. We will pay the members of these cohorts for six months, so that that is their primary focus, is let's launch some businesses, let's create jobs, let's create an industry, an entire industry in Kern County. There is far more to that, but we wanted to just introduce the idea. We have, you know, we have a proposal and other things that we can share with the City Council, with the Board of Supervisors. But that, in a nutshell, is exactly what we're trying to form here. The first cohort we will launch would be that entrepreneur, you know, you kind of come in with any business idea, and we launch from there. There will be other types of cohorts, but we'll still be very entrepreneurial-based to create jobs, create positions, all of that in Kern and Bakersfield. But that first one we're looking to launch is similar to the video that we were going to share. So outside of that, we would like to house this in a Bitwise, in the Bitwise Building, which is going to be, and many of you have probably seen it and driven by it, I pulled up some images today that I'd like to share with you in this slideshow to give you an idea of why it's important to house it in a Bitwise Building, what that means for the city and the county, and kind of walk you through some of that in this slideshow. So it sounds like we're not going to get the video. Is that right, Mayor Go?
We do not have that capacity, but City Clerk, if you could forward that to all the council members after the meeting, that would be great.
Excellent. Well, then I will walk through this presentation that you have pulled up. So we can, I'll just say next slide each time, if that works for everybody. So go ahead, and let's go to the first slide. So this is the outside of that old Turks Coffee Building located on H and 18th, and right now you're looking at the north side, just across from the Padre. The building is almost done. We will start, hopefully, opening our doors in the summer and getting people into this building. This is a, this is also for members of the public, members of, or employees of Bitwise, and companies just not necessarily tied to tech, land in our buildings. So if you've ever walked into a technology building of any sorts, there's an energy to it, there's a vibe, there's just this kind of unexplainable feeling that you get. And we really want to create that here in Bakersfield. And go ahead and go to the next building, or the next shot. This is, again, the front side, all-new glass, all-new outside, completely, you know, completely revitalized for the community. We can go to the next. This is the outdoor parking lot. It used to be completely gravel, kind of unusable, staircase was not even really, I remember walking it up the front, you know, the first time I walked up it, when it was still under construction, hoping I made it safely to the second floor. So we have completely taken this and made it a working, outdoor working space, because, again, we rent space out to other companies and our community and house them in Bitwise Buildings. We will have the capacity to have, for example, food trucks, like you can see this truck pulled up in the back, and events out there, and, you know, similar to, you see people a lot of times in Bakersfield, the kind of only outdoor working space we have often happens to be at coffee shops and such, you know, things like that. This will be a place where people can come, work, enjoy the outdoor months of Bakersfield. Next slide, please. So this is one of the classrooms. So what we're proposing with this innovation lab is these entrepreneurs, and again, these non-traditional entrepreneurs, will have the ability to have a dedicated classroom just for them, their instructors. This is theirs, you know, accessible 24/7 all the time. Next slide. This is just another overview, just to give you guys an idea of what these buildings will look like. Next slide. Another one. Next, please. This is the downstairs, or I'm sorry, this is the middle coworking section. So we allow memberships for people to come in and, you know, rent space for coworking. And that is outside of actual rentable space when you are your own company with your own logo on a glass door with your own key card. This is more of a space to collaborate, to bring visions to life. We, it's important to note that the physical space for Bitwise is important, because we really have it in Kern County or the City of Bakersfield, had a spot where, if I'm a new entrepreneur, and/or just creating, you know, whatever it might be, or trying to start whatever company it might be, that I could physically walk into a location and say, I need a digital marketing expert, I need somebody to set up a backend payment system, I need somebody to create a website for me. This is that space. And we want it to be, there's all kinds of stories that have come out of Fresno from, since Bitwise started in 2013, of people connecting in these buildings and launching companies and, you know, creating jobs, all in their local community. So this is our coworking space. Next slide, please. This is an aerial view of the coworking space. Next. This is our taproom. So we make these fun, we make Bitwise Buildings very fun. There's often coffee shops, there might be a bar. This will be a taproom with a local brewery here in town, which we haven't finished the contract yet, or else I would, I can't give that away yet. But these three doors- But these three doors you're seeing, these glass doors, they actually will open up. So there's this indoor-outdoor feel. It's open to the public. Again, it's a place to come and meet, and we want it to be open to the public, open to, you know, whoever wants to come and be at a Bitwise building. Next slide. So this is a specific space. I wanted to add these in. This is dedicated space to the innovation lab. So the cohort members that we will be paying to become, you know, to launch their companies and teach them how to launch their companies and create seed money for, which is also part of, kind of a subsection of what we're trying to do and what we'll be doing at Bitwise. This is their dedicated office space. So at any time, members from the cohort can come in, you know, they can meet with other cohort members, they can meet with members of Bitwise if they need help on something, they can meet with their cohort lead, whatever it might be. But this is their dedicated office space, which is part of the proposal. Next slide. This is just another aerial view to give you guys an idea of kind of what that, that looks like. Next. So I want to provide some data. The founders cohort, this is from the founders cohort that we did in Fresno, which is just a little bit different from what we're proposing here. But it's 100% local from the community. We've had 60% female or non-binary, 40% male, 30% Latinx, 30% black, and 10% Asian are, were the cohort members from the one in Fresno. Next slide. This is just a little bit more about kind of that founders cohort. It's 100% tech or tech-adjacent companies. And the reason tech-adjacent is important is because I think we all know, in today's world, if I created a, we actually had a woman do this in the, this cohort, create a body butter. Well, what else do you need to sell your body butter? You need a website. You need that payment, the paid, you know, the backend payment structure. You need digital marketing. It has to be involved in tech in some way, right? So some of those projects that these founders launched were apps to solve transportation equities, which connected users to walk-friendly food and life resources, e-commerce sites that sourced local low-waste essentials that support small businesses, water monitoring platforms, which the goal of that was to bring equity to water sources to some of the most marginalized populations in the, in the U.S. And those are just a few of what was launched in this past founders cohort. Next slide. Founders, and this is just a couple more, 100% program completion. So every single person that went through our founders cohort completed it and launched a company. 90% of the business concept moved forward post-program. And we raised over 200, 2.5 million in seed funding secured by the end of the founders cohort to get those businesses off the ground. Next slide, please. So here's the expected outcomes that we want to see for our, our community. We want to see 24 new companies or products founded each year. And that is those three cohorts I talked about, with each involving eight members. We want to create more than 100 new jobs created year over year. And that, I think, you know, is a low number, but we've got to start somewhere. We want to secure more than 2 million in seed funding by the end of the cohort, and we want 100% program completion for the members going through this. And I believe that is my last slide, but let's go ahead and check. That is my last slide. So I, again, I know I'm limited here on time, but that is the concept between, behind...
She, we just lost her.
So any, I don't know if I have time for questions, Mayor Go, but I'm happy to open it up or hand it off to Ryan or County Administrator Alsop if you'd like to say something.
Mr. Clegg?
I think I would recommend that we have a few more comments from Mr. Alsop and myself, and then we could open up for questions for any, any of us. So Ryan, if you'd like to make a few comments on behalf of the county.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you, Mr. Clegg, for allowing me to join you tonight for the presentation. And I really want to thank you for being really an outstanding partner to me as, as we both work to advance the goals and objectives of our respective bodies, the city council and board of supervisors. And you've just been incredibly available and attentive, and I want your mayor and I want your city council to know that I appreciate that great collaboration. I believe, too, that, that this is a partnership that's never been better between the city and the county. And demonstrative of that collaboration and partnership is this innovation lab with Bitwise Industries, which is incredibly exciting. I want to say that while this presentation is happening tonight with your city council, we plan on doing a similar presentation with Ms. Thielen to our board of supervisors next Tuesday, so it'll be very similar to this, this presentation. We're really excited about Bitwise here in Bakersfield and the workforce development partnership with them and, and with the city. It's really affords the, the city of Bakersfield and Kern County something that we've really never had before, which is a robust technology incubator that's going to transform lives in a very permanent, sustained way going forward for members of our community. And so that's incredibly exciting. So I want to just end it, end it there, just want to thank Bitwise Industries. Amy, thank you so much. You've been great, working with you. Thank you again, Mr. Clegg, and thank you, city council, for the collaboration on this extraordinary project.
Thank you, Mr. Alsop. Mr. Clegg?
Yeah, thank you, Ryan. And would reiterate as well, it's, it's been a very positive and productive partnership with the county as well. And to summarize a little bit, you know, the community has need, I think the city and the county also have particular need to meet some of our, you know, technology advancement goals. And with those needs, there's an opportunity. And I think that this demonstrates that when you get creative and when you dream big, you can bring forward concepts that are, that really do make impact. I think that the market has not necessarily been driving something like this to happen on its own. That's why the public-private partnership and the proposal from city and county to put in some public resources to kickstart this. But I would paint a vision that over two, three years, that the concept would be that we would see some success and we would see private investors saying, oh, I would like to put some money into training employees for my company through the Geekwise Academy and through this innovation lab. And you may see other private investment come in to develop entrepreneurial ideas coming out of this innovation lab and an opportunity to create a place of synergy, as Amy mentioned, where we're doing some problem solving and some engagement together with multiple stakeholders. And so while we want to be good stewards of our resources and have very specific outcomes, we think that there will be opportunities for this to grow and to expand, create synergies in new and exciting ways and ways that we need to see. But this is a good way and a place to start, so we're excited about that. The city and the county are, are both interested in bringing resources forward. I would like to recommend funds in our upcoming annual budget process to help support this project. The county has the ability, through their workforce development dollars, to help support this program. And so it would be a joint, truly joint venture between the city and the county and Bitwise moving forward. And so we would come back to the council with a more specific proposal that has some of those deliverables and funding numbers outlined, but wanted to bring this forward in concept to you today and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Very excited about this. This goes way back a few years when Councilmember Freeman and I and KEDC visited Fresno, and then we brought Councilmember Smith because we're just so positive about what was happening there. So we're looking forward to this investment in our community and the ability to reach people who, non-traditionally, are involved in this industry, many of them who just never had this opportunity. I would encourage you, colleagues, if you have not heard this story of the CEO, to listen to that story. And now, Madam Clerk, any comments from the, requests from the public to speak on this workshop item? Okay, we'll go to council. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, just want to say, I love this. I love this a lot. This is great. I love the vision. I love the boldness. I love the partnership between the city and the county. Great job. I'm excited about this. And Amy, downtown is ready for Bitwise. We can't wait for you to open, so let's go.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Gray.
I'm also excited about this because we do need some diversification in our community, that's for sure. But I do have a couple of questions. For the Fresno group, what was the average age? Are these young people coming out of high school or are they older? And then what are the requirements for them to get accepted into this academy?
Great question. I would say the average age was probably around 24 for this founders cohort. Our other apprenticeship and tech classes range anywhere from seven to 72. So there really isn't, we don't have any requirements on age for this. We will be asking people to apply for this, this cohort, and we are still working on exactly what that looks like. But similar to the statistics around demographics that I shared, we will be looking to, to put some of the, put similar demographics into place in this, this cohort. So still working on that. It'll be in the proposal, but it'll very much be representative of Kern County and the city as a whole, not talking to our community.
Do they have to have experience prior to this to be accepted into this or?
Not at all. It's more about the idea, the grit, you know, the want, all of that. And we do a pretty good job of, you know, making, and because we're also paying them to do this, you know, the, the focus can be solely on this. And, and so there's not a, you know, I have to go to my second job or anything like that, which very much helps in the process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. And thank you, Ms. Thielen. Mr. Clegg, anything closing?
We are excited to bring back the details and appreciate the energy and questions on this topic.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Motion to receive and file.
You have a motion. Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Parlier?
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Thank you.
Consent calendar, items 8A through 8V for approval.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I received one request to remove item 8J for separate consideration. Is that, oh, from on direct, Councilmember Gonzalez? Any other items to be addressed? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve items 8A through 8V with the exception of 8J.
Thank you. You have a motion. Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Weir?
Aye.
Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
And Councilmember Parlier?
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now Councilmember Gonzalez with item 8J.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Vice Mayor. This item is regarding the Economic Opportunity Area Incentive Program and a grant agreement with Bitwise Industries for $50,000. This is the second grant from our EOA in the downtown area that will be awarded to Bitwise. I'm excited that we're able to partner in this way and support this project. I just had a few questions for Mr. Clegg, if you will. Number one, how many grants so far have been awarded in the EOA funds?
Grants that have been awarded in EOA funds at this point are, this, this would be our fourth.
Okay. And how many of those are from the downtown fund specifically?
Two are from the downtown. I'm anticipating another question. There are actually two other applications for downtown that are also in queue right now that have yet to be awarded.
That's my next question.
That would be four total for downtown.
Way to anticipate needs. I appreciate that. And also, just so we know, for, for reference, the balance of the downtown EOA?
So there's actually one caveat I wanted to provide about our EOA balances, and that is that, that the EOA balances did assume that there would be some of that tax increment that would accrue over time. And I would note to the council that we have not appropriated that increment as of yet, but we've been tracking it since the inception of the program, that we provided some PSVS dollars as seed funding into those programs. But we would, we would probably look in future years to start appropriating those increment numbers into those balances. And so I'm actually going to give balances with the assumed increment that's available there.
Thank you.
So with downtown, with the four applications that have been received, that would spend about a little more than $200,000 of the total $256,000 that is available in that EOA. And so with each of those four, we would actually expend all of the PSVS-funded funds for that EOA by the end of this year.
So that's, just to be clear, that's assuming that the pending applications, upcoming applications are approved by council?
Correct.
So then we will then be left with the $56,000 balance, assuming that those, that increment is actually assessed to the district?
That is correct.
Okay. That's all. Thank you. With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
You have a motion, Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Weir?
Aye.
Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
And Councilmember Parlier?
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Hearings.
Our next item, public hearings. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side, so it's important that you identify yourself and make your statement succinctly so others may speak. We'll hear statements first from those opposed to staff's recommendation, then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of the staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screen behind me which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and after 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up, quickly enter statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk. She'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Unless there's an approval by the majority of the council, there's a strict 15-minute time limit per side, so please be concise, avoid repeating the remarks of the previous speaker. Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item?
Public hearing to consider general plan amendment zone change number 19-0405 McIntosh and Associates Representing Price Environmental Services LLC property owner.
Thank you. City Manager, Clegg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council. Planning Director Paul Johnson will provide some context.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, Paul Johnson, Planning Director. This item is a general plan amendment zone change on approximately two and a half acres, located at Astor Avenue and South Union Avenue. More specifically, more specifically, it's a general plan amendment to go from residential to service industrial and a zone change to go from residential to light manufacturing. In essence, it is an extension of the light manufacturing that's located adjacent into the south. This project was considered by the planning commission in December with no one speaking in opposition. It was unanimously, unanimously approved on the consent agenda, therefore staff's recommendation and planning commission's recommendation is that you approve general plan amendment, plan amendment, zone change number 190405. This completes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Arias?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I motion to approve staff's recommendation tonight.
Thank you. You have a motion, Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Weir?
Aye.
Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
And Councilmember Parlier?
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. And now, next item, please.
Under new business, solid waste division recycling program update.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Just a quick, a couple of comments. This is a... This is a topic that has some broader context and is in response to follow-up from a presentation provided to the Budget and Finance Committee. While there's some specific action items that are driving some of the timing on our recommendation for tonight, did think that the broader perspective would be helpful for council. And so Mr. Nick Fiddler, our Public Works Director, will walk us through both that, an update on where we're at in recycling in general, as well as some specific recommendations for moving forward.
Good evening again, Council and Honorable Mayor. Again, Nick Fiddler, Public Works Director for the city of Bakersfield. Tonight, I'll be providing an overview of the city's recycling program. As you may be aware, there are two main sources of recycling. One source is our curbside blue carts and shown on the screen, there are the various materials that are acceptable to be placed in that bin. And our second is our commercial blue bins for commercial facilities. Again, similar products excepted just on a larger quantity. So recycling history. City began the curbside recycling program on a volunteer basis in 2003. By 2012, we had 90,000 residents participating in the recycling program. State mandated curb recycling in 2013. The remainder of the customers were placed into the program. No fees increased. We have approximately 100,000 residents that we serve in the city. City historically relied on Metropolitan Recycling LLC, MRC, more commonly known as MRC, and Bark to process recycling materials. Over the years, there have been several different facilities, but MRC and Bark were the two primary providers of our recycling services. City would divert material to each of these facilities based on pricing to keep both facilities competitive. Continuing with the history, in June 2012, the city entered into a 20-year land lease agreement with MRC, which allowed MRC to build a materials recovery facility for handling commercial and residential recycling material. The MRF is located on the city's green waste facility, which is out on Mount Vernon, South Mount Vernon. And MRC is operated by a consortium of private haulers. Prior to 2017, MRC and Bark would profit from selling the recovered materials and would compensate the city for taking commercial and residential recycled materials to their MRFs. The revenue was based on the market value of the recycled materials. On your right, you can see a picture of the facility at the green waste facility. This is some of the materials recovered through both the blue cart and blue bin routes. This is what they would look like after it was processed. They were processed and put into bundles like this, and those bundles are then taken to market for sale. Up until 2017, China was responsible for recovering 60% of the world's recovered recycled materials. In 2017, China began to limit the amount of imported recycled materials and started rejecting lower-quality material. This threw the fluctuation into the recycling market, and the values of recycling materials started to plummet. Then China enforced a new national sword policy that restricted imported materials, recycled materials, causing the world's recycling market to collapse. This is not just a local issue, not just a state issue, not a national issue. This is globally an issue. It's affected every nation, every country. As you can see from the chart here, we stretched back to January of 2012, where the city would receive a revenue of $65 per ton for recycled materials. Again, when MRC or Bark would bundle their materials, they'd take it to the market and sell it. They would make enough profit to cover their operating expenses and also pay the city $65 per ton after they processed it. You can see the gradual decline and where the, in 2017, you can see where their revenue became a fee to pay for the processing. And at one point, we're paying as much as $143 per ton to recycle those materials. We're currently at $90 a ton. City begins to move forward. So in 2018, staff came to council with a presentation, if you might recall, Weather the Storm. We came to the council, explained the situation that China had imposed on the whole world, and we, at that time, we decided to try to weather the storm to see if the markets for the recycled material would regain their value. Unfortunately, that did not happen. The costs continued to escalate, and we were impacted. And we were impacting the refuse enterprise fund balance, which is a factor of determining the refuse rates, which ultimately ends up costing the residents and their annual rates. In an effort to mitigate more significant rate increases to the customers, staff began to evaluate options to recycling costs. In early 2020, the staff identified a facility in Wasco that was recently closed due to changes in the recycling market. Staff started reviewing a lease option to begin a pilot program with their materials recovery facility. At the March 25, 2020 council meeting, Councilmember Weir submitted a referral to have staff review options and present to the Budget and Finance Committee. Concurrent to this timing of the referral, Bark announced that they would no longer be able to provide recycling services due to regulatory changes to their funding. At this time in March of 2020, we only had Bark and MRC as an outlet. All the other smaller recovery facilities had closed already due to China's national sword. With the closure of Bark, the city would lose one of the two facilities accepting our recycled materials, reducing our options moving forward. As a local MRF, Bark was a higher priority than the Wasco facility. Obviously, being local to a facility that we had already been delivering our materials to in lieu of taking them all the way to Wasco to have them processed, staff started turning to the Bark facility to a potential pilot program. And also, given the time constraints for Bark's closure and its impacts to a local MRF, staff quickly pivoted to work with Bark to form a pilot program. The pilot program was meant to provide the committee more detailed real-world data to use in making any recommendations. So here's an overview map of the two facilities within Bakersfield. We have the MRC MRF, which is located, is green, located at the green waste facility, and the Bark MRF, which is shown in red. We put the city airport, just to give you reference of where the location was for the Bark MRF. It's along Union Avenue, just south of White Lane. I mean, sorry, north of White Lane. A close-up of the Bark facility. Bark actually owns the property from basically that southern red boundary all the way up to the corner of Plans and White Lane as part of their continuous operations. However, the outline there is basically their MRF facility. So moving into Bark operations, this is the building that we were leasing as part of the pilot program. This is their sort line. This is some of their clients, Bark, using to sort through the materials. Again, another picture of the client sorting through the materials. They basically pick the materials off the line and dump it down chutes as the material goes on a conveyor belt by them. And then this is the baler. So you can see a product of mixed paper being baled that will be taken to the market once the materials are recovered. This is baled cardboard that will also be taken to the market. And this is aluminum cans and bottles. Again, another snapshot of the, this is actually the north side of the facility. You can see the loader that pushes materials up into that conveyor belt, which then goes into the pick lines. So the Bark Pilot Program, in July 2020, city and Bark executed two department agreements, both being a three-month term, to run a pilot program investing the cost of operating the MRF. One agreement was for the lease of the facility, and the second agreement was for staffing using Bark's labor to supply, to perform the sorting. The pilot costs included Bark's labor, supplies and equipment, along with staff, equipment and lease payment. And lease payment being the payment of the building and the facility and the equipment. In late September, staff determined the need for additional time to market the materials processed at the MRF to determine how much revenue would be offset. To give you a reference, you know, it takes a little bit of time to gather enough baled material to actually take it to sale. So we have to get enough quantity of material to make it worth a buyer to come in and give us a proposal for those materials. So it did take a little bit longer than three months to build up enough material that we can turn around and sell. On October 20, the city council amended both agreements to increase compensation and extend the terms to allow the pilot program to continue for additional three months. After including all the costs, staff determined the following results. Bark Pilot Program processed about 578 tons of material per month at a rate of $97 per ton. Again, the $97 per ton is all the costs that we paid to Bark for their labor, their leases, and some of our own manpower to oversee the operations of the facility. The materials recovered and sold resulted in a revenue of $54 a ton. There is additional material that had not yet been processed and not sold as of yet, but staff estimates that the value of that material would be approximately $49 a ton, which ultimately resulted in a $6 per ton, which means the city would ultimately earn $6 per ton, putting us back into the revenue instead of the costing of cost, as you saw on that earlier chart. The current alternative to the city processing recycled materials is to pay private vendors to process materials. The current per-ton rate to a private vendor is $90 per ton. At $578 or 578 tons per month, this difference would save approximately $650,000 per year versus sending that same amount of material to outsource vendor. Just want to note, this was the pilot program. So that was having a favorable lease with Bark and also using Bark's staffing to process the materials. Unfortunately, that lease is no longer available, which I'll get into a little bit later. But so the costs for that will go up, you know, based on our future options. Finding takeaways. Pilot program data shows city can process blue cart materials at lower cost than single remaining option that exists with the current local market. Not a nuisance, this is not a new concept. It's very similar to how we operate the curbside hauling services. As I mentioned, we have roughly 100,000 residents. Currently, the city splits those services between city staff and the haulers contract. So we do about 50% of each of the refuse collection services for both the blue, the green and the tan cans. It fluctuates between 48 and 52, depending on when we start rerouting, where the growth is, who's handling those areas that are growing. But as we get up to about 52% on either the city or the hauler side, we try to rebalance it to try to maintain that 50% average between the haulers and the city. This reduces future rate increases to customers across the entire city recycling program. The continued city's efforts across all operations reduce costs assisting businesses and residents in economy recovery. Complicating factors. Bark selling the MRF. In September 2020, Bark notified the city they would be selling their entire facility due to changes in their overall operation. When I talk about entire facility, go back to that picture, the aerial. They own the whole east side of Union Avenue from the MRF facility almost all the way to Union Avenue, which is a very large site. They are in the process or in negotiations of selling their site. When we found out that they're selling it, staff requested appraisal of the facility, and public works staff started to evaluate equipment that could be included in the sale. Bark now has a property listed publicly and has received two letters of interest on the MRF site and has accepted an offer on the remaining portion of the property on Union Avenue. Alternatives moving forward. Outsourcing all recycling materials to private contractors. Work with contractors to determine most cost-effective solutions for city to address changes in recycling. Purchase Bark facility and operate a city-owned MRF. Recommend contracting with Bark to operate. Or pursue other MRF facilities as lease or purchase options to continue to have a second MRF to manage capacity and costs resulting from changes in recycling. So cost considerations for city-owned MRF. At $90 per ton, current cost, assuming 578 tons per month, the cost for outsourcing to private contractors would cost the city ratepayers approximately 6.2 million over a 10-year period. Based off the pilot program, including the cost to purchase Bark's MRF and assuming additional operational costs, operating the Bark facility as a city-owned MRF would cost the city ratepayers approximately 2.5 million over the same period, this resulting in a savings of approximately 3.7 million. The analysis did not account for inflation of recycling market value change and affect net revenue. The 3.7 million difference should remain consistent as market values change and inflation would affect both the city and outsourced vendor comparably. So what that's meaning is, the market that we take back our materials to sell is going to be the same as for the city as it is for the private vendor. So we will get the same marginal costs. Our operating costs are known for both facilities. It's the variable of what the market value of that material is. So if the market value for the material is $100 today and it goes up to $150 tomorrow, it's going to affect both the city and the vendor the same way. There's going to be a net increase to both of us, or a positive. But if it's 100 today and goes to 50 tomorrow, we're both going to see that same decrease in value, and it's going to increase our costs for operating. Similarly. Advantage of a city-owned MRF would allow checks and balances between the city and the private contracting when comparing each other's recycling program while maintaining a competitive rate for the recyclable materials. Again, our goal is to keep, to control our ratepayers' costs. So having this ability to monitor the costs allows us to understand what the market is, what the challenges are for the recycling community. So that way, we have a comparison. We can work in a partnership with the haulers or the MRC and understand their challenges while understanding our own challenges. And we can work together to find a way to overcome those challenges. So this is also similar to the rest of the refuse collection system. City and contracted haulers each collect approximately 50% of materials, as I discussed before. This is very similar to that same concept that we have out there. We both face challenges in that area as well, as costs of equipment go up or the cost of some of the new regulations that are becoming out here very shortly with SB 1383, which will be in my next presentation to you of how Cal Recycling and the state are going to be mandating certain enforcement of recycling of all materials. The city can continue to work closely with the private contractors to address impacts of changes to the recycling market while operating a city-owned MRF. Again, going back to, it's a partnership. We'll understand what their problems are because we're going to have the same problems, and we can work together with them to solve them. and we can work together with them to solve them. Based off the pilot program and exploring the possibility of owning a MRF, there should be a considerable savings that will ensure city refuse rates are one of the lowest in the state. I wanted to put this chart in here just to show you how competitive the city of Bakersfield is in their refuse rates. If you look at this, the city of Bakersfield being at the very bottom at two hundred and twenty-three dollars per year for refuse service compared to Kern County, who is in our community at two hundred and seventy dollars a ton, you can see there's a substantial difference. And some of these people, some of these residents are directly across the street from each other. Someone that's in the city is paying two twenty-three, someone in the county is paying two seventy. And we also provide more services. For instance, street sweeping is one of our programs. Other factors impacting the cost of recycling. California regulations, AB three forty-one and what I just mentioned, SB thirteen eighty-three. Overall intent is to achieve a state's goal of seventy-five percent landfill diversion. And blue cart recycling is a component of those regulations. So again, there was some question of why don't we just take this material and take it to the landfill? Because we can easily just take it to the landfill and pay forty-eight dollars a ton and be done with it. But state regulations won't allow us to do that. We have to have a recycling program. So that's, that's why we're maintaining this. Diverting recycling material to a landfill is not an option. Uh, in addition, these laws also mandate changes to grain waste and organic food recovery programs that will impact the city's refuse rates in the very near future. In January of twenty twenty-two, we have to start new programs that will require food recovery and food storage facilities. And also having to have code enforcement officers going out there and verifying that these, these commercial businesses are obeying by these new guidelines. So finding savings for processing recycling materials will help offset additional costs for the green waste and food waste programs that will be implemented in twenty twenty-two. Other considerations for mitigating recycling costs. Educating campaigns to, campaigns to reduce non-recyclable materials being placed in the blue bins. What has happened is a lot of people think the blue bin is a secondary trash can. They, when their, their tan can gets full, they just start dumping it into the blue bin. They're also unaware that you cannot put food-soiled components into the, the blue can. For instance, a pizza box is not recyclable. It has too many food residues within it. So the, the education campaign is very critical to helping with our, with our operations of a recycling campaign or recycling. And this is somewhere we can team up with our, our private haulers and, and do a strong outreach and try to minimize those items that are not being placed into the, that are being illegally placed into the blue bins. Creating local markets for purchase of recycled materials is an option. Uh, other agencies are adding surcharges on top of solid waste rates to account for these shifts in the market. Just recently, the Kern County now charges twelve dollars surcharge to residents for recycling. They anticipate that to go up this next fiscal year as well. Cities Budget and Finance Committee. Staff presented recycling program update to the city's budget and finance committee. The committee voted two to one in favor of allowing staff to bring forth presentation recommendations for full council consideration. And so here's the recommendations. Staff would like to submit a letter of intent or interest to Bark regarding the possible purchase of their material recovery facility. Uh, this would allow staff to negotiate a possible purchase price with BARK's facility and to continue evaluate other options for mitigating recycling costs.
And before we jump into questions, I just wanted to provide some summarizing statements to say what this recommendation means and what it doesn't mean. And I may oversimplify a little bit, but I'm happy to dig into specifics in some of the questions. But I think it's important to speak to the partnership that we have had with the haulers and with MRC and, and what this means about, you know, where, where the city's trying to head. Uh, so to over, again, perhaps simplify is that for the, you know, nearly the past decade, we've had two operations, two centers in the ability to send our recycling materials to these two different locations and two different entities. And what this, what, what this recommendation means is that we'd like to keep those two options open. I think all things being equal, would we move in a slightly different timeframe? I think so, but we have the reality that Bark is looking to sell their property. They've got those letters of interest and time is against us. Uh, but I think that the pilot demonstrates that there's some real opportunity here. What this does not mean is a departure from the very valuable relationship we've had with the haulers for a very long time. And the haulers have been very great in this conversation with us. In fact, I would, you know, in fairness to them, give them credit because they could be in a role of, of advocacy uh, on this topic and they've been very supportive and productive in the questions that they've asked us of how are we thinking through what we did with the pilot? And so this is not a, in any way meant to be a signal that the city is wanting to go in a particularly different direction. We want to continue in the path that we've been and continue to have that really great partnership with MRC. I, I think if I could also oversimplify the, that we have two different facilities that have, both have strengths. And I think the city being in a slightly different role where we, you know, in order to continue operating in the Bark facility would have to, you know, come into this ownership role. I think there's opportunities to learn from the strengths of both facilities. And so the city has a unique position in our partnership with the county and our ability to send some materials that have been sorted over to the landfill. But at the same time, the, the, the large technologically advanced facility that's been built by MRC at our green waste facility, they have good technology that they've invested in there. And there's some opportunities, I think, for the city to learn from the strengths that they bring. And there's some opportunities clearly in our ability to process, you know, some of these materials at, at, at a cost, a lower cost that we can learn from one another through this process. I think it's important and fair to say that the pilot, I don't think the council should walk away from the pilot data, assuming we're going to start making money on recycling. That this, this is, that the market has changed significantly and the market is likely to continue to change as state regulations change and are adjusted. And so I would think about this as we saw a range of potential savings achieved through the pilot and that as the city would, you know, take on these operations, that we would need to continue to do our homework and to evaluate and to watch this closely and have really good productive conversations with the haulers and MRC to learn. Again, can they do some things at their facility to save, uh, to create savings there? And, and can we also understand some of the things that they're doing there to help our, our operations be better? Uh, because there are differences in the, um, the percentage of the recycling streams that are being processed at the different facilities and, and it's likely that we're going to have to continue to recycle more and more of the waste stream based on state regulations that will have impacts on, on the city side of operations. And so, um, again, MRC has been a good asset to the city. We want to continue to have recycled materials go to them per our arrangement and agreement, you know, for a very long time. And we just want to continue to have these two options open and continue in that partnership. But absent the ability to move forward with the Bark facility, it takes away one of those options and it takes away our ability to leverage some of those strengths that we do have and leverage some of those savings and continue to find the best way to do recycling at, at the best rate for our ratepayers. And so, um, again, uh, wanted to signal, um, you know, a bigger picture, what this is about and what it's not about. And, and our partners at MRC are really important partners to us and, and don't look to change that relationship with them.
I would like to also add on to Mr. Clegg's comments. We have been meeting with the hauler, or MRC, Mr. Panero, who is in the audience with us tonight, and John Price, and discussing some of these partnership ideas and how we can help better each other. As Mr. Clegg had indicated, our, our recovery is, is not quite as much as what MRC is doing. The more we recover, the more we're able to sell would result in some more revenue, but there are costs associated with more recovery. And some of the factors that we've built into our purchase price is to implement some additional equipment that would help us recover more, to bring those numbers up. Right now, what we're using is what historically Bark was capable of doing with their own employees, with their own system. But as, as if we do move through the purchase, we did build in some costs, some capital improvement costs as, as in we move in and, and start to increase the ability of that facility to, to have a, a larger recovery overall. Uh, again, and then working with, with the MRC group, we, you know, shared some of our areas that we were able to shave benefits or shave costs. And, and we worked with them and told them, look, Bark has a, a reasonably priced labor force. MRC is now working with Bark on potential oper, options of providing a labor force with them as well. So I see this as a win-win for both the city and the MRC, which, who are the private hauling industry with, is the only one left. So as Mr. Clegg is ind- indicated, we have an invested opportunity with our partnership. They are on our city facility, they are on a land lease. So we have dedicated or we are dedicated to make sure that they succeed. Our only goal is to try to drive, to, to control our refuse rates. And by doing that and providing the second outlet and watching the market, working together to try to figure out best practices to bring those costs down are, is what we're, we're trying to do.
Thank you, Mr. Fiddler. Thank you, Mr. Clegg. And now, Madam Clerk, any requests from the public to speak on this item? Thank you. And so we'll go to counsel for comment.
Just a few comments. So Bark is historically had a lower recycle rate. I mean, what percent of their, those materials actually do get recycled as opposed to what doesn't?
So historically, I think they're roughly around the thirty percent range.
Okay.
Which we're going to try to bump up as we take over that facility.
And what is it out at MRC?
Uh, spiking with, uh, Mr. Panero last week, they, they average about seventy percent.
So when SB thirteen eighty-three comes into effect, how's that going to change things at Bark?
How is it going to change things at Bark? We'll probably get more materials because a lot of the commercial businesses will be required to install blue cans. A lot of them do not now, so there will be more processing of blue materials.
Okay, so the organics and that, I mean, it's going to get dumped in the blues anyway, so.
Or, organics get jumped in the greens. Yeah, so you might have some contaminated if someone is not putting it in the right bin. But organics will be placed into the green, which will be taken to the green waste facility operations.
They already have, so they've been trying to sell this since September of twenty twenty?
They, um, due to COVID, they realized the changes that they need to make to their operations. So that's when they notified us that they will be putting the, the facility up on the market. I don't recall the exact date the facility went up on the market. It wasn't September, uh, it was later in the year.
Okay.
When they actually start, you know, started marketing it and, you know, brought on a, um, a real letter and then started marketing it.
So they haven't accepted the other letters of intent. They're, in my understanding is they're kind of waiting to see what the city's going to do.
Yes, uh, Bark is waiting for what the city's going to do. They do want to continue a partnership with the city. Um, they see the benefits of having their employees being able to use this, you know, work at the facility. So they would be, they are interested in the city acquiring that facility is correct.
So, and we have continued conversations going on right now about how we can improve our recycling and, um, other adjustments that can be made to where we would either have less costs or more revenue. Is that, that's what we've been doing here in this interim period?
Yeah, correct. We, we have been, uh, throughout, the whole pilot program is to, to lower our costs and look away, look at if there's a possibility to actually get back to a revenue. Um, we are also studying how to improve that facility at Bark to have a higher recovery rate. So there, there's multiple, um, things that we're working on, but at this point, we were only able to recover thirty percent because that's what they had pri- previously. But we are looking at mechanisms, equipment that may need to be added on the front end or back end to, to increase those numbers.
How much, or are we talking about two million dollars worth of equipment or?
No, yeah, it's, um, a range, a range between five hundred and seven fifty for one piece of equipment that would pull off a lot of the, uh, a significant amount of the cardboard. And then that would free up the pickers to, to get the, the other items. Um, so that, that's one option. There's, there's several different things you can add. You can add a glass screen, um, to pick up, uh, broken glass at the end. But there, there's a lot of, um, pieces that you can add on and they all have varying costs. But we figured that our first, uh, purchase would be that cardboard screen because that is implemented at the front of the line. It picks off the cardboard and diverts that material and then frees up the, the sorters to pick out the, the finer elements and the, and the, um, uh, paper products.
Okay. Any other equipment we need, big, big ticket items?
Um, not right off.
To get to seventy percent?
To get up to seventy, we'd have to pick up a few little, you know, a couple more items. But, you know, it'd be over gradual time and we built in, uh, capital improvement projects. What we did is we, we looked at financing this for a ten-year period and, and to finance the purchase of it. And then we also added in capital improvement programs periodically through that ten-year period to continue to add on to it. But our first purchase was within year two of the program to purchase that, um, screen for fiscal year two because obviously it's going to be too late to get it into this fiscal year. So we would add it into the next fiscal year capital improvement program. And that would give us enough time to go through there and enhance what we can now, which we, we believe there's some fine tweaking and tuning we can do to get a little bit above thirty. And then in year two, fiscal year, um, twenty-two, twenty-three, we would acquire this next piece of equipment.
Okay, so if Bark is really prefers us buying that and, uh, and if we wanted to take a little time, maybe, um, next council meeting or the council meeting after that, and you did more negotiations and explored other concepts, et cetera, with Bark and with the haulers, um, seems like that would put us in a little bit better position.
I don't think that Bark will wait another council meeting. They're, they are interested in selling. They do have a new facility that they're moving to. They do have someone that has a letter of intent on the property. I don't think they'll wait.
Well, that's a different property though, right? That's.
No.
South.
They have, they have a, a letter of intent to purchase the whole site, including the MRF.
And they haven't executed that yet?
No.
Because they're waiting on us?
Yeah.
Um, I think that means we have some time. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Gray.
My question, Mr. Fiddler, is from the time that the city is, I mean, Bark has approached the city to purchase Bark, have you had any roundtable discussions? Mr. Clegg has been talking about this wonderful relationship we have with the haulers, which we do. And so have you gotten any input from them since Bark has approached the city to purchase this? Or has there been any roundtable discussion?
Yes, like I indicated, I've met with Mr. Pernaro and Mr. Price, a discussion. We've met with them on multiple occasions prior to starting the pilot program. After the pilot program, we've, we've discussed with them as well, yes.
You have, just recently?
Yes.
Okay. So what I'm hearing and understanding is that there's an opportunity, but there's also risk involved in, you know, putting the, the city at risk. And I was, the return on investment overall, I'm having a hard time with the city wanting to pick up more of what the private enterprise can do. That's, that's kind of what's getting me here.
So going back a few slides, I mean, and again, this is very similar to the operations that we do through the remainder of the refuse collection system, which the city picks up 50% of the, of the materials and process, and the haulers pick up the other 50%. The only difference is now we're processing these materials. We own and operate a major green waste facility, which most other cities do not have. So we, we have a lot of processes that have helped save our residents a significant amount of money on their rates. This would just be an extension of those same processes. Instead of processing green waste, we are processing recycled materials. Yes, there's a risk, but there's also a fairly large reward in keeping our rates lower. So they, if you look at the numbers that we've projected for a 10-year purchase, we're saving $3.7 million over a 10-year period based off the current data. That's $370,000 a year. So is there a risk of buying the facility? Yes, there's a risk of buying anything. But we have to plan for how we, how can we control these costs moving forward? And this is only one of the ways that we can help control those costs.
Now, in this plan, you're talking about using Bark employees, which that would be a lot less money than if we ended up having to hire city employees.
Correct.
Because now you've got the benefits and the pension plans and this could, the decision we make, this council could affect the city for decades, way, way after I'm gone. And so have you all calculated those costs that if you end up not being able to hire enough Bark employees, where they go somewhere else to work, and now we are stuck with a facility that we've got to, we've got a man with city employees with benefits and pensions? Have you all weighed that into this equation of this $307,000 that you're saving every year?
We haven't figured in costs for city employees, but we have figured that there are more than just the Barks out there. We have similar contracts with Bakersfield Homeless Center that provide similar type of services that if Bark was not able to perform. There, there's other options out there for these type of job training skills programs.
Okay. Is anybody else wanting to speak? I would like to make a motion. I'll wait then.
There are some other requests to speak.
Okay.
But your, okay. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. The request is, is to start working on a, a letter of intent. You would negotiate that letter of intent, and that letter of intent would have X number of days and purchase price, et cetera. And then that would come back to council.
That's correct. We would issue Bark a letter of intent and then start negotiating on sales price that would ultimately be brought back to council for approval. So we're not purchasing the facility tonight with this recommendation. It's just giving the city, the staff the authority to move forward and make an offer for that facility that would then be brought back to council for approval.
Great, that's, that's my point, is that this, this is not the last look.
That's correct. All right, yes.
And you would have firm numbers of what you're paying for at that point?
Yes.
And when you would close, et cetera. Bark is selling their whole facility, but they're still going to have employees. What, what is their big picture plan?
They are actually moving to a new facility. Because of COVID, it's changed the way that they, they perform their services with their client. Their, their facility on Union Avenue is very large, and it has a, a large training facility for their clients. Because of COVID and the, the way that they've changed up how they operate, they, they don't need that large of a facility anymore. So they have, they're relocating to a downtown location, and I don't remember the exact location at this point.
Okay, but they, they are still, your understanding is they are still willing to provide labor?
Oh, yeah. They, they are strongly desire to provide labor, yes.
I, I would just reinforce, the relationship that we have with the haulers has been great for the city in a lot of ways. They're great community members. It has created a situation where we are, you know, the lowest rates in the state, as you pointed out. And that's because we, we collaborate with them and, and we work together to find the best solution. The city's involved in owning garbage trucks and picking up garbage, and, and we are competitive on the routes that we run with, with what they run, I understand?
That's correct.
I, I think it's a great, I mean, $3.7 million, and we keep the rates low and, and we continue to collaborate, seems to me like a great way to go. So I will make the motion for staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple quick questions. Nick, just to clarify, you indicated that the estimated cost savings to the city and to the ratepayers is $3.7 million over 10 years. But that does include the equipment purchases that are required to get to that.
Yes.
Threshold, 70%.
Yeah.
Perfect, okay. And, and, and you know, we, we talk about risk, and obviously there's risk in everything, but I want to talk about the, the, the risk in not moving forward on this. And, and I'm interested in you just underscoring for us, just so the community is clear, what other facilities are available out there? What other MRFs are available in the community for us to contract with?
In our area, there are none. MRC is the only facility out there at this point. There is an option that we backhaul all of our material to another facility in another city. You know, we can, we can pay to have all the materials hauled to Fresno and have them process it, maybe at a comparable rate by the time we have all the hauling costs, you know, $300 a truckload to go all the way up to Fresno. So there, unfortunately, there is no other option here in, in Kern.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Gray.
I would like to make a motion, but being that I am newer on this council, I'm not sure if this is the right time to make it.
You can go ahead and do it, and if there are other speakers, they'll be able to continue speaking.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion to not send a letter of interest at this time that staff is to continue to study various options that are available to the city. I know we've heard some of that tonight, but that both Bark and the haulers be included in the study and discussion and return to council at a future meeting with multiple options, including the pros and cons of each, so that the council may make a well-informed decision. I'm concerned about the haste that we are trying to get this done in with, so that's my motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. And now, Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Nick, do the trash haulers have a position on this? Are they neutral?
You know, I, I spoke with Mr. Pernaro on Monday, and they said they were in support of this, of moving forward.
Okay. Well, I'm going to support staff recommendation with this caveat. Some of my colleagues have already mentioned this. I think it's extremely important to have the haulers as part of this conversation when it's talked about them being part of that roundtable discussion. I hope they are and do have a seat at that table. And with that, I feel that that unity and stakeholder partnership will be stronger and look forward to what's next. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Nick, for doing your due diligence. I know this was a somewhat surprising heavily, heavy lift, as I like to call them. So I appreciate your, your work and your diligence there. I just want to make a point that I represent a ward and, and many taxpayers and residents in Southeast Bakersfield that live paycheck to paycheck, many of which who face, you know, double-digit unemployment numbers that are atypical of what we've seen throughout the rest of the state, many of which who live on fixed incomes. And so we look at these numbers and we think, oh, yeah, it's just a couple of dollars of an increase if we were to go the alternative route. But this is kind of a big deal for some, for many folks who are in my ward and that I represent. So I appreciate you bringing this forward. And just a couple of caveats, I want to echo some of the comments that my colleagues have made. I want to be crystal clear when we come back on what the potential staffing costs are with owning and operating that facility, both long-term, short-term, and additional information and, and line items on what that machinery would cost and how much it would, it would cost to maintain that machinery. So if we could get that next time, I think that that would be helpful. And then going to echo what my colleagues have been saying the, the entire time about making sure that the haulers are, are part of the discussion. I think that needs to be there. They're great people, they're great citizens, great partners to the city. And frankly, they're, they're professionals in the industry. And obviously, they're doing a darn good job at this, and so we need to make sure that, you know, they're part of those discussions and, you know, maybe we take some notes from them. So either way, I'm in support of this, your, your recommendations here tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman.
Yeah, I, I have nothing that allows me to raise my hand here. I want to clarify a couple of things just for myself. Is the primary reason for the difference in the cost between the hauler's recycling facility and ours, the low cost of labor through Bark?
That's one of the primary factors. There's another that we're going to try to work on. The city does not have to pay for tipping fees at the landfill because we're processing it of collected services, where when it goes to the haulers, it becomes their, their property.
Okay, and, and how much, and the land, we own the landfill, is that correct?
No, we do not. The county of Kern owns the landfill.
Okay, and about how much, you know, if, if, if the difference, I'm not sure because I saw so many different numbers. I thought I saw at one point, we were 93, then I was another, we're like 57, and the there 90. What is the difference per ton, just round number estimate, between the cost of, of having a Bark-type facility and the hauler's facility? What is the cost per ton difference?
So when we ran the pilot program, this is prior to or adding any purchase of the facility, we were operating at a negative $6. So basically, we were receiving a $6 revenue for the materials that we processed during that pilot program. And we were actually paying at that time anywhere between $110 and $90 a ton to the MRC.
I wouldn't be sure. So ours is negative six. Let's just say it's zero.
Yes.
Net nothing, and it costs, and we pay the haulers 90 to 100. Those numbers just seem incredible if they, I mean, maybe they're right. One is just, I guess, a massive difference in labor costs and the others, the, the fees at the landfill. But those, I mean, operating would seem to be, other than the labor, which is usually three quarters of your cost at any company, that, you know, that's the big advantage in the tipping fees. So what, I'll, I'll just say, when you say it's that great, it wouldn't matter if it was half that, is so startling. So I guess there's a huge advantage through a Bark-type facility. One thing I would want understood, well, two things. First, that the haulers are in agreement with our moving forward, because that's what I heard you say. That makes me feel good that, you know, we've, that we're working together. But, but I guess we've used in our analysis, what is it, a, a 10-year, what amortization of the purchase price is built into your, your numbers, you know, as, as a new cost to us?
That's correct.
And that doesn't make that much of a difference when you amortize it over 10 years, $3.7, $370,000 a year, which really isn't a very big number compared to the difference in operating costs that we have. You know, all of this sounds pretty good to me, and, you know, I can, I, I think I can see, you know, supporting something that gets us to some final numbers in a couple of weeks. But I, I want to be sure, we're not ever talking about, and I think that ought to be part of the premise here, ever having the city take over and run this thing with city employees. I say that's, that's the, you know, that, that would be my biggest fear because I would think, you know, our costs can be very high if we have to pay with our labor costs and benefits. I don't see how we could be any better than the haulers if we had to do that. So I just want to be sure that there isn't any scenario where we're saying that we're going into this business and running it with our people.
That's correct. We do not have any intent on running that facility with city staff. It would be utilized with the contracted labor force.
Okay, I just, I think that's important for the council to hear and for, for you to say, so we know we're, you know, we're not going to really, I don't mind improving, increasing our workforce for the things that we've already set as the priorities in the city. But I wouldn't want to take on new ventures and increase our workforce that way. So I think with that assurance and the assurance that the haulers are in favor of this, you know, I can, I think I can support us getting to the next meeting for a final decision.
Yeah, and at that next meeting, we will definitely provide a, a breakdown of the cost, the capital improvement programs that we would implement over the 10-year period. So you can see, you can fully see what our operating cost would be.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. So on the tipping costs that our haulers have to pay and we don't, Nick, do you know if the county charges their haulers tipping fees?
The MRC is their haulers, so yes, they have to charge, they're charging MRC the same as they're charging the city.
They are?
Yes.
Okay. Well, still, I, I think it's a little bit unfair, and I'm going to ask city management if there's a way to advocate on behalf of our haulers to see if we can reduce those costs.
Yes, Councilmember, and I'll take that opportunity to make a few comments because, and, and these comments may even sound, you know, eroding some of the potential upside to this, but I want to be very transparent and very fair in this, in this conversation. So from the, the presentation, you saw that, you know, we're assuming after some of the capital costs that will probably be, you know, around $2.5 to $3 million to, to, over a 10-year period, we're assuming at a $90 per ton rate, that's a $6.2 million cost over 10 years. We're assuming $2.5 to $3 million in capital costs, that's, and operating costs, excuse me. That savings is $3.7 million. If we can work with MRC on the tipping fees, that's going to reduce that $6.2 million number. And so the potential savings, we hope, frankly, to reduce some of those, you know, potential savings in that sense, that we're helping MRC get their costs down as well. Also, with some of the other factors, if we need to buy some additional equipment to get from 30% up to the 70% of recycled materials, that might, you know, increase a little bit some of our costs. So as we, in partnership, help to reduce some of the recycling costs, if there are some factors that bump up city recycling costs, there's a range of what that savings is. And I think in fairness, we should expect that that range, you know, may shrink because of both of those factors. I think when you look at, if you start, if you start at zero, you know, we haven't, we haven't incurred any additional costs, we haven't paid any more for the services that we're providing, that's good, I think. We haven't incurred. we're providing, that's good, I think. We haven't increased costs any. If we achieved a million or 2 million in savings, that's a big win. If we were achieved 3 million or 3.7, that's huge. So I want to be transparent that 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 range of savings may adjust as we reduce costs on both sides, as well as there may be some other impacts on our costs. But when you have a range that's that big, to the risk-reward equation, that is a pretty, I mean, that's a pretty enticing opportunity. And I wanted to speak to one other element. I think in fairness to the haulers, they didn't provide public comment tonight. I, in my conversations, you know, personally with the haulers, I would say the haulers are in support of the city. They want the city to be successful. They want to be good partners. I think that there is, you know, for this specific project, the haulers would ask us key questions. Are we making sure we're considering everything and the math that we're doing about our assumptions and our estimations? And that they would be supportive of a city effort to overall manage the recycling program and the costs of recycling overall. So I don't want to, I think we as staff have to be careful in overstating where the haulers are at on this. So I want to be respectful of that. I think they they've expressed that they're in support of the city and the city running our programs well. And we respect the fact that they have been supportive of the pilot as a concept and asking and answering some of these questions. But absolutely, the haulers are interested in transparent data sharing and fairly looking at apples-to-apples comparisons of these costs. Because, you know, their operations are run a little bit differently than Bark. And so, you know, as we would move forward, it would be really important for us to make sure that we're in deep conversations with them and and sharing all the data in an open and transparent way. I think that's what the haulers would ask of us is is to be open and fair and transparent in that. And then finally, I would just also suggest that the, we can explore options. But I do think we genuinely have a narrowing of one of the options staying on the table. And so we wanted to be able to respond to that in the timeframe that's available to us. And I don't want to introduce, you know, too many variables. But, you know, the city purchasing a facility at fair market value or, you know, it is an asset that does have value. And whether the city, you know, wanted to operate that with assistance from other, you know, providers, whether that even was in partnership with the haulers. I mean, these are all actual roads the city could go down in one, two, five, 10 years. And that's not what we're proposing today. Again, there are strengths to the different operations. We want to leverage those savings we're getting as a city. But we will have options on the table if we take action now. But we may not have as many options on the table if we don't.
Councilmember Weir.
Thanks, Mayor. So I'm hearing a lot of cost-saving ideas being bantered around here. And I'm wondering why are we, have we not been taking advantage of that in the past? I mean, if if all this stuff is available to us and it's been out there, why haven't we been doing it?
So we have, in the past, obviously, the tipping fees, it's always been through private. Bark was private, MRC was private. And the county has been very strong about not requiring tipping fees for both of those facilities and any other smaller MRF that has processed. Because the city of Bakersfield is processing the materials and there are materials, they were allowing us to tilt, to waive their tipping fees because it is coming from a, from commercial or residential facilities. The problem with MRC is all the all the materials are blended. They bring in stuff from the county, they bring in stuff from the city, they might even bring in stuff from other smaller cities. And it's all blended and processed at one site. It's not just the city's materials that are processed at that facility. So it's, it's not as easy as saying that the city's materials are free for the processing when they are charging, the county is charging themselves for those same tipping fees for their materials.
Okay, but I lost my train of thought.
And then going back to the, maybe I can answer a little bit further while you're thinking. The Bark scenario that we we sat down a week or so ago with the haulers or MRC and, you know, said, you know, here's a possibility for you to work with Bark and hire some of their clientele as a, to operate your MRF. They had reached out in the past but weren't weren't able to come to a conclusion or reach an agreement with Bark in the past from what I understand.
Okay. But back to your previous comments about the tipping fees, none of that's going to change. Is that correct? That means we're not going to, we're not going to have anything favorable coming to us from that.
So for us favorably, we do not, as we operate the Bark, we do not have to pay the tipping fees. So yes, there's a savings of $48 a ton on the residuals that are taken to the landfill. MRC currently has to pay those fees.
Right.
What I heard from a council referral is that they'd asked Mr. Clegg to work with the county to try to get those fees waived. And we, we as Public Works and City Manager's Office will go out and work with the county and see if there is a way to have those fees waived. For the 30%, when we talk about tipping fees, it would be 30% of the materials that they process. So because that's what residual they have left over that would go to the landfill. When they, when they collect 100%, they're recycling 70. So that would mean 30% of whatever they collected is going to the landfill.
Whereas 70% of ours is of Barks.
Of Barks currently, yeah.
Okay. I, I guess I'm confused because there seems to be a lot of good comments and suggestions for ways to cut costs and save money. So why haven't we been doing that?
Well.
It's kind of rhetorical question, actually.
So this is a perfect example of the opportunities that we're creating. We weren't in this business a year ago. So we didn't know that those challenges that were happening. So now that we're in this business, we're understanding what the haulers' challenges are, or sorry, the haulers', MRC challenges are. So we're working through those issues. That it's just, it's, I mean, that's, that's plain and simple. We, we are now understand their business because we have performed that business. Another thing I would like to throw out there is is that my, I just hired an assistant solid waste manager who came from this industry, who has a lot of background in the material recovery facilities. He operated a fairly large facility in Fresno area. So he has a lot of background. So this isn't something that is new to the city staff altogether. He has that background experience. So he has that knowledge because he operated a much larger facility. So that's one benefit that the city, I should have mentioned earlier, that we do have some in-staff, in-house staff knowledge on how to operate one of these facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I don't see any other requests for comments. And so we'll take the last motion first, which is Councilmember Gray's motion. Madam City Clerk?
Vice Mayor Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Arias?
No.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Freeman?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Parlier?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay. And now we will take Councilmember Smith's motion. Madam City Attorney, Madam City Clerk?
Vice Mayor Weir?
No.
Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
No.
Councilmember Parlier?
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. And let's take a seven-minute break and then come back for the next item, which I think might take a while.
Although you'll see from the recommendations that we're still remaining very conservative, wanting to put monies away for big projects and rainy day, as well as, you know, most of our funding streams, assuming pretty conservatively those slight increases that we're seeing and not just assuming that we're going to have, you know, a lot more revenues this year, even though the numbers are indicating that they'll be higher, we're going to keep our estimates fairly conservative. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Huat.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. City Councilmember Chris Huat, City Manager's Office. This evening, as Mr. Clegg mentioned, we'll be giving you a mid-year budget update. Device is here. Each of you should have the presentation in front of you of printed copy. But here is the overview of what we're going to be covering this evening. The city manager made a few comments just a moment ago. We're looking to look at the fiscal update so far through halfway through the current fiscal year. Going to talk about a few adjustments that staff is proposing, both from one-time funding and from ongoing revenues. Wanted to give you a brief preview of a CalPERS update and some fiscal modeling that staff is working on. And then wanted to give you a quick look ahead as we round the corner into next budget season already. Just a little bit about the work that we've done on the budget over the last several months. This council adopted its current fiscal year budget on June 24. We've been to you with quarterly goals updates on the 23rd of September and January 20. And then we brought to you a quarterly budget update on October 21. And we committed this year to doing those quarterly budget updates based upon the various unknown circumstances and somewhat of the roller coaster that our local and and larger economies have been facing due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the associated shutdowns. Again, tonight, we're here to talk about the mid-year budget. Most of what we're going to be talking about tonight are the numbers. In past years, we've talked a little bit about goals that we've accomplished. Again, this year, we're really going to be honing in on those those dollars and the financial side of things. So with that, I'm going to bring up Randy McKeegan, Finance Director, to walk you through revenues and expenditures at our midway point. Thank you, Mr. Huat. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. Randy McKeegan, Finance Director, as you heard. As is in my wheelhouse, I've been given the opportunity to present some of the numbers. So we're going to really kind of take a step back first. As part of the building of the budget, we look at fund balances. Specifically, we're going to look at General Fund right here and really recognize what is available to be used in the subsequent year. So when we build that budget at the beginning of fiscal year, we look at estimates for revenues, expenditures. And when revenues exceed our budgeted revenues and expenditures are below our budgeted appropriations, we have what's called a savings, available savings for. And if we need them, we can appropriate them in the General Fund. So at the beginning of this fiscal year, we put, we estimated about $18 million of fund balance to be used for the General Fund. The budget is presented and approved by council in June, but our numbers are not really final for the year until sometime in the summer, so August or September. So once we closed the books, accrued back revenues and expenditures, we came up with an additional $2.3 million in fund balance that could be used in the current year. We didn't make changes in the appropriation until the mid-year budget time period. So those amounts are above and beyond the resources that are in the current year budget and are available for use in the General Fund. Presentation and explanation of those recommendations will be presented later in this presentation. So moving forward, looking at current year to date activity in the General Fund specifically, we're going to start by looking at the revenues in the General Fund. And then this, this, just a presentation or this slide shows revenue year-to-date and compares it to actual revenue from prior year and the budget in the current year. So if you look at this, this slide, you see that we have, oh, sorry. Let me get my glasses on. You'll see, and I can see now, that we have $289 million, almost $290 million in revenue last year. We budgeted a reduction of $282 million. Year-to-date, we have $121 million in the General Fund collected. Based on our review of numbers, specifically county figures for assessed values, numbers we got from our sales tax consultants, we've actually upped our estimated revenues for the larger three portions of our revenue. Looking at the property tax, it went up $2.3 million from our budget. The historic or Bradley Byrne's sales tax went up $4 million to 75 and a half. And sales tax, the new Public Safety Vital Services sales tax increased by $5 million. So as you see, year-to-date, our projection out for the end of the year, we see that, or we estimate that for the most part, all of our budgeted line items will meet or exceed the budget that we set up at the initial start of the year. One caveat or one difference that you'll see is the charges for services, though. You'll see that we had a budget of $20.1 million in charges for services. We actually had to reduce our revised estimates for the end of the year, down to 19.8. That almost exclusively is related to charges for services related to our recreation park services. There is no activity, hardly any activity that's being allowed. So that revenue has been reduced significantly. So we've reduced that by about $500,000 in total, netting, netting out to a total reduction of about $320,000. This slide also shows transient occupancy taxes. We'll kind of touch on those later. It's not a General Fund revenue, but it is something that has important funding and it's, and it has been affected by the current pandemic. Moving forward into the General Fund expenditures, these slides, next three slides, really provide a picture of where each of the budget for each department stands within the General Fund. So when we look at this, the first column is the actual budget for each department. The second column is where we stand year-to-date. That's through January 34. And actually, it's for the first pay period, the last pay period that we made, which was at the end, actually beginning of February. So in essence, we're 61% complete for the current year of the budget year. So when you take that into account, you'd expect that a department would have at least 39% budget available to get them through the remainder of the year. As we go through these slides, you'll see that all of the departments actually have well over 39% available budget going forward. So just as an example, Technology Services has a $5.5 million budget, second to the bottom line. They've spent $2.7 million. They have $2.8 million or 50.19% of their budget available. So they will have, based on these numbers, some savings at the end of the year. Moving forward to the larger budgets in the General Fund, we have Public Safety, Police, Fire, and Public Works. Again, each of their budgets point out the fact that they're well above the 39% threshold, the way you'd expect at this time of year. So again, expecting some savings as we go forward. Next, the remainder of departments, it's the same story. There is some savings in all of the departments. Again, they're well over the 39% threshold of what we'd expect at the current, at this point of the fiscal year. So in essence, I think I touched on it earlier, the primary source of savings in operating activity expenditures is salary savings. So vacant positions for portions of the year generate the majority of these operating savings and are really generating the majority of the operating savings that you'll see in these particular slides for expenditures. So moving forward to the Public Safety and Vital Services Fund, most of you know that we, while it's considered a General Fund revenue source, we, we account for the Public Safety Vital Services revenue and the related expenditures in a separate accounting fund. So we track them. Similar to the General Fund, we have savings and expenditures. We have revenues over expenditure, revenues over budget that generate a fund balance that's available for subsequent year appropriations. In the current year, like the General Fund, for subsequent year appropriations. In the current year, like the General Fund, we had significant savings. It amounted to $15.1 million rolled into the subsequent year. But unlike the General Fund, we did not use any of those funds to appropriate it in the current budget year. So those were set in a reserve, in essence, and we did only use current year revenues to prepare the budget for the Public Safety Vital Services Funds. So that fund balance, as we saw on the revenues, we have $5 million in estimates of Public Safety Vital Services money over what we budgeted. So we feel that that $15.1 million does not need to be in reserves anymore, and we have, are planning to augment the current year budget with some recommended budget items, which will again be presented to you later. Talking about reserves and the need to be conservative in our approach, not only were we conservative in holding aside those fund balances, we also, as we saw in the revenue estimates, we projected a 7% decrease from $74 million to $69 million in Public Safety and Vital Services revenue. We also set aside, we budgeted it, but we also put it as a contingent budget, specifics expenditures, specifically the reserves. We set in contingencies. We have a reserve plan to build up reserves to up to two, two months of General Fund expenditures. We also had capital projects that we put in a contingent bucket, and those amounted to about a quarter of, or 24% of our Public Safety Vital Services expenditures, or budget, I should say, were really set aside in contingent projects until, it's not to be really triggered, until we knew that revenues were coming in as expected. And as I said earlier, our revenues are actually exceeding what we expected in the budget. So again, we made those contingent plans, and now, moving forward, we will be able to take those contingent plans and move them forward in actuality, funding reserves and affunding the capital projects that we set aside for the mid-year budget adjustment. So we're going to look at the Public Safety revenues, just kind of looking at a history. Most of you know that the Public Safety Vital Services tax was approved in 2018, 19, November. It was actually, took, we only received one quarter of revenue in the first, the first year of 2018, 19. So we budgeted, based on consultants, our sales tax consultants, $15.5 million for that first quarter, which is the last quarter of the fiscal year. We actually received $17.1 million. Last year was the first full year of revenue for Public Safety and Vital Services revenue. We budgeted, again, based on consultants and review of the upcoming year, $61.8 million. Actual revenue last year was 74.5. Again, I talked about that. We budgeted a reduction of 7%, about, from 74 and a half to 69 and a half million, based on the recent information we've received from our consultants. The budget, the budgeted revenue actually will be closer to $75 million as we get to the end of the year. So again, like the General Fund, I kind of want to walk through the budget. It's, as I said, it's a separately accounted-for budget for the Public Safety Vital Services expenditures, and this is the same, similar to what we saw with the regular General Fund. These are the individual departments' budgets within Public Safety Vital Services Fund. And again, talking about 39% of the year budget left, we see that every one of these budgets are well above the 39% threshold, meaning that there will likely be savings, and again, amounts available for appropriation, again, for Public Safety and Vital Services activity only in the subsequent year. And so with that, I want to really move on to, I said, we talked about transient occupancy tax. Fortunately, that slide is cut off at the bottom. So what this shows is the history of the revenue for the last five years. Those blue bars are really the revenues we've received from 2015, 16 through 2019, 20. So those five fiscal years of actual revenues received. So you see, the last four years, we had revenues of transient occupancy tax revenue, a close, over $9 million and close to $10 million in 1920, I'm sorry, 1819. So with the pandemic, we saw a $1 million or 10.4% reduction in transient occupancy revenue last year, going down to 8.9. We budgeted, again, another million-dollar reduction to 7.9, and we anticipate that we will meet those revenue estimates for the transient occupancy fund. We will not really need to make any budgetary expenditure adjustments to those projects funded by transient occupancy taxes. So with that, I will pass it back to Assistant City Manager Huat.
So just to touch upon the summary of what Randy presented, again, we're showing more positive revenue trending than initially anticipated. And just a bit more information on some of the why. As we looked at our development activity, it remains strong, both on the commercial and residential side of things. The governor actually allowed certain businesses to defer some sales tax payments as a result of the impacts of COVID-19. So we have seen some of those deferrals impact our sales tax receipts. However, even when we account for those, trending is better than projected. What we're really seeing are some significant increases or strengthening from a sales tax perspective in the new vehicle sales sector, building materials, so your home improvement stores, and online sales. And so those are some key areas where we're seeing those positive trends. Property taxes, I always like to say, are like the tortoise. They're not going to fluctuate. They're going to be a little lagging behind the actual economy. So again, we're just showing some very marginal increases this year over our projection, but nothing significant. Again, hotel taxes down. Of course, we've seen the impacts that the shutdown has had and COVID-19 has had on the travel sector. I think the good news, if there's a bright spot, as we look at the numbers, we look at them on a weekly basis, many of the indicators that we have for our hospitality industry are showing that the hotels here are doing slightly better, and I take that with a grain, we say that with a grain of salt, but slightly better than statewide averages in other parts of the country. We're not as tourism-based as some other, don't let David Lyman here may say that. It's just, it's just a fact in terms of some of the stays we do get out of hotels are more business-related, and so we have not been as impacted as other markets. Another note, the city did receive $33.5 million worth of CARES Act funding. In the development of the budget, we did not know the amount or the timeframe in which the city was going to receive that funding, so we did build in $3 million into the, essentially, the General Fund for recouping costs associated with buying materials and supplies and other costs directly related to mitigating COVID-19 from a city perspective. We will be well above that. We're still finalizing those numbers based upon some reports we have to do with the state, but we do anticipate the amount of reimbursements that will come into the General Fund from the CARES Act will likely be a bit greater than $3 million. Again, we're in a bit of a unique position to be able to recommend to you tonight some additional adjustments to the budget, again, based upon these circumstances. Before I get there, I just want to share two slides, then we'll get into the proposed adjustments. Wanted to share two slides that are of interest to the council based upon some items that we've talked about before. One is our development of a long-range financial model. As part of the budget this year, the city invested in working with a consultant to develop a very comprehensive, long-range financial planning model. And this is really data-driven inputs and outcomes. That really doesn't describe really what this model encompasses. This is really a robust tool that's going to have many benefits to staff and ultimately to the council in developing plans for future year allocations of resources. As we know, the dollars that we do work with are precious and finite, and so this tool was a great investment in our, in our view of being able to, again, look at different what-if scenarios, make changes to key variables and assumptions around existing and new revenues, personnel costs, CalPERS costs, and reserves. And again, it really gives us a tool in the toolbox that we didn't have previously. Speaking of that, we are diving a bit more into that model. One area that model has to do with CalPERS, and previously, the city relied predominantly on static data from CalPERS to run projections. So there wasn't really a lot of ability without spending really a significant amount of staff time to develop very elaborate models to assume things like lower returns and what that does. There's a lot of ripple effect, or more detailed payroll costs and staffing growth models. There are a lot of assumptions that CalPERS built into their actuarials that the city didn't have the ability really to tweak. But using this model, and we actually updated some figures to share with you tonight, using this model, we were able to run some different scenarios, just to start to show you the benefits of this model. What I will share with you may not be viewed as positive in nature, so to speak, the numbers, and I can appreciate that. But this, this model really helps us to provide you and the public with a bit more finite and technical information. So with that, I just want to share two slides real quick, and we are going to come back during your budget process for the next fiscal year and dive into this a bit more. Apologize for the small numbers. But what we're looking at are total purse costs and millions of dollars that the city pays, or is projected to pay in out-years based upon some of these, these new models. This first model suggests that CalPERS is going to meet their target investment rate of 7%. It also builds in some staffing growth model and wage increases. And what you'll see is that in fiscal year 20, that's the actual number, 51.2 million. That's the amount the city paid. The city has three plans with CalPERS, one for fire, one for police, and one for our blue and white employees. Those are the three defined benefit plans. They all have different variables and factors, but this is the aggregate number. We're projecting that number to be this year, 58.9 million. And then in the out-years, assuming that 7% investment return, you can start to see those numbers stair-step up. We are expecting to be impacted more predominantly starting in fiscal year 23. That's when the phasing will come for CalPERS missing their investment returns. This past year, I believe it was just north of 4% that they hit this past year. So we'll start to see the impacts in fiscal year 23. So I want to show you a similar slide here, and again, this is just to kind of start to dig into the modeling. We're able to tweak some different numbers, and this actually shows, well, what if CalPERS averages 6.2% in the future years? And I can toggle back and forth between the slides if you like, or you can look on the printed copy. But you start to see in the out-years, the impacts that that potentially has on the amount the city will be paying to CalPERS. So I believe in that last year, that we showed the difference between the two amounts, just based upon one assumption change, is about $10 million. Again, this is, this in part is to provide some information that the council has requested previously, specifically related to our CalPERS projections, but it was also an opportunity to start to take some of that data out of that model and be able to apply it in some of our processes here.
And if I may, really quickly, Chris has done a good job of giving a teaser for this model, and you saw on that slide many different graphics, and this model will have a lot of good visual displays. We didn't want to put them all up today because we're still vetting through and refining all of those numbers, but that's one consideration. The other consideration is when you start to look at a 20-year horizon, it helps to think about how we plan. And so this is several years out, but in the versions of the model that we have, you see this increase, but then a leveling and actually a drop in about 2030. And so after 2030, we have a little bit more capacity now. What changes that happened to CalPERS because of the pandemic and their return rates, you know, this year, we'll see if that impacts that trend line over time, but it is good to know, over 20 years, what will some of those costs be, and that we will see a bump, but then a leveling, and then our ability to continue to, you know, fund our operations beyond 2030. But between now and 2030, we do have this increase to deal with, which will be significant pressure.
I had a question about CalPERS. So just regarding the model, if I may, I'm so sorry. But so if we added, for example, the investment in the Section 115 trust, can we include that in the model to, to see what the unfunded liability is in X number of years? I'm assuming so.
Yeah, we can factor in those, the 115 model and assumption of payments out of the 115 trust to CalPERS. That's part of the modeling that we can do. Yes, absolutely.
Vice Mayor.
So, I mean, seven-point discount rate, that sounds good, 6.2, in actuality is four. Can we have a couple more of these slides that show four, four and a half? Because I don't think anything's going to change for them for quite a while, so.
I think that's the great thing about the model, is we can rather easily run some different scenarios, but happy to put together a bit more robust package. And that was the plan, yes.
Okay. And will we be, will we be getting to what has happened in OPEB fund and all that?
I do not have an OPEB slide today.
Okay.
Generally, what we do, and again, I look to Randy, but I believe we just got an updated actuarial, and so we were planning on including that as part of our next year budget process to give you an update on funding status and investment return, et cetera.
Okay. Do we know if it looks good?
Yes.
Well, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Chris?
Yes, Councilmember Freeman.
Yeah. When you give us our next set of slides, it would be really helpful if, if you would put in one, two, you know, high, low, medium, projected growth rates of revenue in the city, and show us the percentage of our General Fund that we are paying out. I mean, if it's like 20% today and it's 20%, you know, 10 years from now, we don't worry about it. So we need some context to look at these numbers, you know, and if we grow faster, it goes down. But we're looking at this with no context, and I think, you know, so it, it isn't, it isn't as good information as it could be for, to help us if we said, okay, we can't spend more than whatever. You know, today, it's 22% or something, you know, is going to this, of just pension costs for our total revenue base. And if you show reasonable, high, low, medium growth of our revenue, we want to, what we want to know is, is that percentage growing? Then we know we have a huge problem. And, I mean, it'd be nice if it, if you, as Christian said, it's going to go down after 10 years. Well, maybe. But I'd sure like to know first, you know, what it is now, there's a percent, and is that percent growing? In other words, is it eating into our revenue so we can't do other things? It's just that, you know, right now, I'm not saying we don't control CalPERS, but we'd still like to know, well, what is the picture? And I think if we knew that, it would, it would, it would impress upon everybody the, the importance of growing the economy and how, which increases our revenue, our taxes, and how that's the only way we're going to survive and be able to provide the kind of community we want and the services for people and all these things everybody wants. You know, everybody wants all these new things, they think we have piles of money. Well, we don't really when we're negatively accruing our pension funds. But, so if you, if you could work that into your next presentation, it would be, be very helpful.
Yes, Councilmember Freeman, I'm nodding my head because that is the type of discussion that Randy and I are having in developing that model that Mr. Clegg mentioned. So that'll all be part of our next update, and we'll be detailing a bit more of those factors. And that's part of what the model will show is percentage of General Fund, et cetera, over that horizon. So absolutely, we will have that.
And one other thing, if you are able to get information on some selected other cities, you know, healthy, unhealthy, you know, some variety of cities, just so we can compare ourselves to others, that would also be helpful. You know, what, what they're operating at, you know, is they're, hey, some people are at 20, some people are at 17, some people are at 30. It's always good to kind of know how you compare to your peers, if you can get that information.
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Councilmember Parlier, then we will go, we'll let our City Manager and team finish the presentation. We'll go to the public for comment and then come back to council for further questions, comments, and action. So Councilmember Parlier.
Thanks, Mayor. So Chris, the graph, as it goes up to 2027, is that at current employee levels, or is that baked in with projected employee expansion?
Yeah, there's a, and that's part of the variable that's, that's behind the model. Yes, there is an assumed growth of city staff over that time period. There's also There's also an assumed growth in payroll as well as wages go up and impacts the percentage of wages in which the CalPERS formulas are applied. So that, those are all the variables that are built into the model.
Okay, great. Thanks, Chris.
Okay, we'll go to Councilmember Smith because he has a question related to this very specific slide.
Thank you. You mentioned the, as a percentage of the general fund, these numbers are total, include enterprise own and the total budget, correct?
That is correct, although I will say that the police and fire are pretty much predominantly general fund. So while I don't have them broken out here, we will have that number.
Yeah, broke out.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hewat, go ahead.
We'll move on quickly to talk a little bit about reserves and where we're at. As you know, this council approved a reserve policy, I believe, a year or so ago that set us on a course, and our target was to get approximately 60 days of cash reserve on hand as a rainy day fund. I'm pleased to tell you that we are making great progress. What this slide shows is where we ended last year in terms of our different reserve funds. The top two are the prominently, the rainy day reserve funds, we'll call it, that are there, both in the general fund and the public safety and vital services, to be there in case they are needed to weather economic conditions, et cetera. So those are predominantly the two funds that we look at when we talk about a rainy day fund. The third, the facility reserve fund, is a specific reserve fund meant to provide a funding source for unanticipated large needs at city facilities, more so in an emergency circumstance than, say, a deferred capital project. But again, we are making great strides on all fronts. As it shows over on the right side, as we move through this presentation, you'll see some additional allocations that staff is recommending to the reserve plan. That will get us to the 53.9 million, absent any more significant changes that are unforeseen in our revenue sides. That'll get us to the 53.9 million total. I think between the two rainy day funds there, it'll get to about 44 million. In terms of how we're comparing to other comparable cities, we did run a recent comparison to most of the larger cities in California. I won't go through the entire list. I can tell you that our target of a two-month reserve is at the top. That's the only three or two other cities, I believe, have that target. In terms of percent funded, at the end of this year, we will be, we will be at that $44 million mark. And again, that's as a percentage of our target, we're within the top three of those comparable cities. So we're really moving forward quickly on this, and I know that that was great interest of the council, so we're pleased to be able to report that to you today. So let's get into the mid-year recommendations. I'll try to move quickly through some of these recommendations, but also, again, available at the end for questions along with the staff behind me. So we're talking about mid-year, so this is not obviously our full budget process. We're looking at no significant actions in terms of ongoing revenue. We are looking at a few new or expanded staffing programs, services, and projects that were not included in the adopted budget. All of these programs and requests that you're going to be hearing about today align with your council goals. As we've talked about, there are two funding mechanisms that we're going to refer to that will be proposed to fund these items. One is one-time funding or that fund balance, both in the general fund and the PSVS fund that we've talked about. Then the other is revenue exceeding projections or that ongoing funding that Mr. McKeegan mentioned based upon our analysis of where our revenue streams sit today and where we think they'll be by the end of the fiscal year. Those large, those one-time fund balances allow for some very strategic investments into some large known projects and programs that are on the horizon that we know need to be completed. We'll get into those in just a moment. It also allows the city to maximize use of ongoing funds. It really reduces what we call the competition for those ongoing funds as we get into budget cycles. So our ability to tackle a few more of those large known costs with that one-time funding is a strategic recommendation made by staff to, again, allow for some more of that ongoing annual revenue to be allocated to community-based type projects that we'll get into. So jumping into the one-time funding from fund balance, the recommendations are as follows. A $5 million total add to the city reserve plan. Again, that's to remain on track to reach that 60-day reserve fund. That's in addition to that $8.8 million that Mr. McKeegan talked about earlier. This would further bolster our plan to get to that reserve status. You can see the breakdown there, $4 million, PSVS, $1 million out of that general fund fund balance. The next item is $6 million. This would be a partial funding allocation towards upgrading the city's 25-year-old enterprise resource planning software. Without going into too much detail, this is the software that is essentially the centralized hub of everything that the city does, from payroll to accounting, accounts receivable, budgeting, all of our personnel. It really is the centralized hub. Again, this system was implemented in 1995. That's the technology we're using today. As you can imagine, things have changed quite a bit in that time. There's quite a bit of new efficiencies and processes that can be had by implementing a new system. We've started the exploratory process to move forward with the new system by leveraging the expertise of an outside consultant from the Government Finance Officers Association. They've come in and done a pretty comprehensive, top-to-bottom review of where we sit today and where we need to be going based upon industry standard and best practices. So we do anticipate a total project cost of about $15 million. Again, we would, at the time that the project would be awarded, come back to you in addition to the $6 million that's being recommended today, come back and actually look at a cost-sharing model that would spread the remaining cost of this project over the various funds that go into, again, funding this because it is a citywide type of platform. Really, again, this is critical to what we do every day as an organization. It's not something that is maybe as visible, but again, it is something that is greatly needed and is something that we feel needs to be invested in today because it will take 18 months or so to actually go from RFP to implementation. It's a big lift, and this is something that we really do feel is necessary. In terms of the digital public safety regional radio project, this is the collaborative joint project with the county of Kern to upgrade the city's 25- to 30-year-old analog radio system with a modern digital radio system. This provides communication for all public safety staff throughout both the city and will provide communication options and redundancy throughout the county. And so this is, again, we're using some scaling with the county to go out to this project. The city's total estimated cost share is about $17 million. Previously allocated $9 million to the project. This request is for another three. We do anticipate the RFP to be on the streets in the next 30 days or so, probably actually sooner, based upon some information I received today. And then we will move into the evaluation process and have an award hopefully before you in the early part of next fiscal year. And then there'll be the implementation, excuse me, the implementation phase from there. But again, this is a significant project as well, much needed for our public safety staff. Another $3 million allocation specifically and exclusively from PSVS funds is proposed for quality-of-life beautification and neighborhood parks projects. I will not go through each one of these projects individually. There's a bit more information in your packet. We have staff here that can dive into any one of these projects, but these are local neighborhood parks projects. This is in addition to the different funding sources that the city has allocated for parks programs in the current year. This is another $3 million spread out in each ward. I think there's projects in each ward to address significant deferred maintenance in the city's park system. These are not simple replacement of a slide or one unit of something. This is a complete, in most cases, if it's a playground rehab, it's a completely new playground based upon industry standard and what is essentially popular. So again, there's some other projects as well, but this is $3 million of, I think, about an $8 million deferred maintenance list that the Recreation and Parks Department has put together. This is really at the top of that list. The code enforcement rapid response teams, we have several that are out in the streets today. They have been, their services have been in high demand. This proposal through PSVS would add an additional rapid response team, again, to address homelessness issues and be able to address more campments, to get hopefully more contacts, to get more people aware of the services that are now provided, both through the Brundage Lane Navigation Center, the M Street Navigation Center, and the 240 bed expansions that the city has undertaken in partnership with the various homeless centers in town. Again, the demand is there, the calls for service are there. This would add, again, five positions in code enforcement in the Development Services Department, along with some one-time capital or one-time equipment funding. Few other smaller-dollar programs that we do feel will have a significant ROI. The first is a differential response pilot program within the Bakersfield Police Department. This would be in partnership with Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. This would focus resources on quality-of-life issues. Again, another opportunity to increase engagement in the community in the problem-solving process, really to address more of those quality-of-life type of issues and crimes that are out there and that need some additional resources. The downtown security patrol has been very helpful in terms of communicating different issues to the police department. The police department does use that data in part to deploy their resources, so this would expand that downtown security patrol. I believe it's the equivalent of one additional uniform patrol person. Also, to expand the downtown waste cleanup boundaries, again, these services are in large demand, and there has been, again, some significant feedback that there are some areas right on the periphery of the existing waste cleanup boundaries that need to be added, and this would allow that to occur. Same scope of work, same hours, same vendor. It would simply just expand their ability to move a bit outside of their current service zone. We've heard about the Clean City Initiative. I'm pleased to tell you that we've launched the six Clean City teams that are out each and every day, Monday through Friday, cleaning up illegal dumping, bulky items. And we've also launched what are now going to be bimonthly household cleanup events that are rotating throughout the city. What we're requesting this evening and recommending for approval is the addition of, it's an administrative analyst one position within the Public Works Department. We're kind of effectively calling it the Clean City Initiative Coordinator. This is really the glue that will bind a lot of these programs together that we're working on to better, have better cross-departmental support and coordination with rapid response teams, both in the code enforcement, Parks Department, as well as any assistance from the police department on the enforcement and education side of things. Also looking for this person to engage a bit more with Keep Bakersfield Beautiful, get them engaged in some of these cleanups in the projects that we're working on. They do a great job. This would really, I think, bolster their efforts. And we are looking to create a Clean City Ambassador Program, which, again, would engage a wider swath of the community around these different events and around some of the efforts of the Clean City Teams to help, again, reduce measurably the amount of litter and illegal dumping throughout the community. And a similar note, we're also looking to add a vegetation abatement contract to the toolkit of the Recreation and Parks Department to do some preventative weed and nuisance vegetation abatement. And again, that would provide them another tool to be able to get ahead of some of those nuisance vegetation issues that we see that are hotspots, that are known areas. This would go a long way and try to get ahead of that, be proactive as opposed to reactive. Heading into the home stretch here, this item that's before you here would be actually an ongoing item. I forgot to mention that the last couple of slides were ongoing in terms of the funding source, and that'll be reflected in the summary in just a moment. This is a ongoing request to add two additional positions to the city manager's office using general fund, ongoing revenues. This would add what we're calling our constituent request, quality assurance team. This would increase capacity and our ability to more comprehensively follow up and coordinate responses for the various constituent requests that flow through our office, whether they come through one of several email addresses that we monitor from elected officials, from others in the community. This team would go a long way in really being able to get at the follow-up, the quality assurance. And this would be through the addition of a management assistant and a secretary, along with some one-time costs for basic computer equipment. Some other cleanup items that are before you this evening, I'm happy to jump in if there are questions on these. I'll just quickly go through them. The first is the formal action to start to reimburse some of our departments and the general fund for supplies and materials that they had purchased to mitigate for COVID-19. Again, at their CARES Act eligible, this is just the technical item to get those CARES dollars into their budgets. The second is a correction. There's a bit more information in your administrative report, but it's a correction that staff is requesting to essentially make departments hold for some fleet charges, internal service rate charges that were incorrectly accounted for in the current fiscal year and correcting those accounts. And then finally, there was a one-line item that was missed by staff in the development of the budget. It's a technical correction. Half of this account, half of the accounting for this vehicle is already there. We missed the other half, so this would be the former, or the formal process to get that in the budget. So this is just the summary of the different items that we're requesting out of one-time funds totaling $17 million, predominantly PSVS, some general fund. And then again, the ongoing, we're showing you the annualized costs. I think the recommendations and the appropriations reflect six-month costs in some cases or the amounts we want to add to the contract, but these are the actual annual costs. And then I did star one because it's a one-time cost. So I want to pause there because I think we probably want to have some comments on the look ahead to see if there are any questions on anything that was presented. I do also want to mention that our staff did meet with the Public Safety Vital Services Citizens Oversight Committee, actually met with them twice over the last two weeks, had some very good conversation about the items that we presented to you funded through PSVS. The feedback and the recommendations are included in your administrative report, I believe with the exception of one. They were unanimous. There was one, a few comments that we've summarized for you in the staff report, and I'm happy to provide any insight or feedback should there be any questions on that input as well. So with that, I'm going to pause to see if city manager Clegg has any further comments. Then we have just a few slides on kind of looking ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. No comments from my part. I do think it would be appropriate to address questions on this last segment from council at this point in time. The look ahead really just gives some calendaring for the budget process for next, for the fiscal annual budget process.
Okay, Vice Mayor, we still also will go to the public for comments. So if this is related to this section, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering if Parks or the appropriate person could give me an update on what's going on at Mesa Marin? I know I haven't seen any construction activity going on out there in quite some time, so maybe you could just provide me with a report on that. It doesn't have to be a referral.
Yeah, absolutely. I would be happy to do that.
Okay. On homelessness and downtown security and downtown waste cleanup boundaries, I'm not trying to encroach on Ward 2, but at some point in time, we need to expand that out beyond just downtown. There's areas in my ward, and I'm sure there's areas in everybody's ward that could benefit from these type of services, and so as we look to the future, I think it should be expanded.
Thank you, Councilmember. I think we'll take that as a signal for the annual budgeting process.
All right.
And I just might reflect that the costs and efficiencies might impact as they are further spread out, but we'll do that homework and bring it back in the budget process.
Okay, thank you. As far as a weed nuisance vegetation abatement program, if you could pay special attention to the batum weeds out in the northeast area alongside 178, I would really appreciate that. And then 178, the landscaping out there just looks horrible. So I don't know what we can do to spruce that up. I know it's Caltrans stuff, but I know they've been out in the center sections, and they've been mowing and doing all that stuff, but it just looks like a third-world country. I'm sorry, but it does. And then... And then I know Nick is, he wants to hear me talk about the mulch at Morning Drive one more time, but if they could just get that done, I promise I'll leave you alone for a while, Nick. One other thing. Nope, I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Parlier.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I was in a holding pattern to reiterate what Ken had to say regarding expanding a security program. I think it was last budget cycle. I asked for that, Ward 7, specifically for the auto mall area, and it's been quite a while since I've seen a patrol car, a security patrol car, out there. So I'm in concurrence with Ken's statements. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Well, I suppose I should thank staff for some of these items. The security contract has been effective, but I, there is a need to expand in the downtown core. We have been inundated with some property crime incidents, as well as window smashing has been a chronic issue in the downtown core, and we just need to get a handle on it. You know, a lot of these small businesses are being significantly impacted already, and this additional cost is one that they cannot bear. So thank you for that. And, you know, the human waste cleanup is unfortunately, unfortunately is a necessary element, and it's been, it's been really effective, and I support the expansion throughout the city. I also want to just lift up the differentiated response pilot program. I think this is a great model. I think it's clear that when our citizens call for a response, it's not always appropriate to send a police officer, that we have to have professionals who are trained in behavioral health and mental health to respond appropriately to that, to those certain specific calls for service. And so I'm eager to see this take off as a pilot and see us expand this over time. I know there are other models out that other cities have already implemented, and I think we can learn a lot from them. I'm not sure how much we have to actually pilot our own. We can learn from other cities and perhaps adopt a much more robust program in the next fiscal year. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. I don't see any other requests here. Let's go ahead with the conclusion.
I don't, I'm raising my hand, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Freeman? Madam City Clerk, can you not see that? We're going to need to work that out for the future.
Couple of quick questions. On the parks slide, there were about maybe 10 parks that have renovations going on. Were those deferred, were those in the budget but deferred from earlier in the year because of COVID? Or were those things that we previously had not put in this year's budget, but now we're going to go ahead and put them in and get them done?
It would be the latter. So these are brand-new projects, so this is additional funding. What you were referring to, I believe, were several projects that were placed in a contingent status pending, that were approved by the council, placed in a contingent status pending staff review of revenues to see if they could move forward. I believe we did include a list of those projects in the staff report, and as part of what we indicated in the staff report is we feel those are able to move forward as well, and I'm going to skip a few ahead, but just as a, these, and Councilmember Freeman, on the last slide, because I don't know if you have access to what I'm showing here, but these are the projects that were held in that contingent status, that are in the budget, that we do plan on essentially greenlighting at this point in time because we do believe that there is fiscal capacity to handle these, plus the additional $3 million we just talked.
So these things, we think we can get them done this year. They were contingent. That's great. And I just want, we had a lot of criticism because we weren't remodeling every park in Bakersfield, I remember at the beginning of the year, and this ought to come close to completing that list of, we had at the beginning of the year, maybe there were 20 park renovations. We said we only do 10. This looks like a great deal of the ones that have been left out, so I wouldn't expect to see a whole nother list of 20 more next year when we tried to get as many as possible this year. The, I guess, other comment is somewhere in all of our cleanup efforts, which I totally applaud, and a great many of them are, cause them are homeless, in this, the complaints I get nonstop, I guess they're actually more in Councilman Smith's Ward because they're above Ming Avenue, but the encampments and the trash, you know, that one experiences from the bike path, I never stop getting complaints, and I go, and they're right, you know? It's, I know it's, I know it's like whack-a-mole, you think you got it, but we will have to have continuing patrols and effort, and I hope you can keep doing these because those efforts along the bike path, around the Riverwalk, we call especially, it's about, you know, a mile, that's where people like to go. And all the people go to the park. I mean, that's the most, one of the most visible places in town, and of course, it's a great camping place for the homeless, but we did have a lot of vandalism and a lot of camps, and, you know, people are getting kind of scared to walk on the bike path now. And so I hope we can kind of redouble our efforts on that. And I do want to applaud you for all your one-time expenditures, basically in infrastructure. We used to call roads infrastructure. We definitely have to keep doing those. But, you know, our software systems and, I mean, how many of us are still driving our 1995 car or using our 1995 computer? Well, our city's had to be, has been doing a lot of that, and to see us clean that up, that's a great prioritization of funds, so hats off to staff for pushing that through. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. City Manager.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Just a few comments reflecting on your comments. One, there have been enough deferred issues at the city in the infrastructure in a category that we are still in a little bit of catch-up, but we did a lot in the first, you know, year and a half. We're doing a lot this year, and the more that we do of that, the more efficient that we get, and the more we're able to deploy future funds effectively. On the park at Riverwalk Trail, we actually, so we set aside $1.5 million for the Clean City Initiative. We have so far allocated $1.2 million in, to those six contracted teams. We are using some of those funds to help with these pop-up events, the community cleanup events, and some of our marketing materials, but we're actually taking a look at what's available and of those funds to consider potentially additional resources for the trailway issues specifically. We need to do some homework. We need to look at some internal implications for work assignments, but we're looking at allocating some of what's left of those resources because we're hearing that that is a, you know, a particular challenge. So we'll be even looking at that before next fiscal year's process. And then lastly, just as a reminder, the deferred maintenance list for parks that we presented at the budget workshop last year was an $8 million list, and this is $3 million into that $8 million list, and so we would anticipate probably more of that work, although I would just point out, Councilmember Freeman, you know, had provided some feedback to some of the parks that were on that same $8 million list and said, maybe, maybe they don't need a full rehab, some of those. And so I think as we work through, the way the list is designed is those that have the most deferred issues are at the top of that list. As we work through this $3 million, we may take a look at that $5 million that's left and say, well, some of those maybe could wait a year, but some of those should be in next year's. And so we'll bring that back through the annual process.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Councilmember Parlier.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to expand a little bit on a comment or referral that Andre made regarding having mental health teams going out. And if I got it right, Andre, is that sort of in place of police, creating something else, or is that in the team atmosphere with, with a Met team or something?
Councilmember Parlier, from my research, there are various different models that other cities have employed, and so my referral is simply to ask staff to analyze those models. I'm sure they, in my conversations with Mr. Clegg, I know that they have already done a lot of this work, but to present some of those models to council so that we can pursue those options. My bigger point is that there are people with significant needs related to behavioral health, and we need those professionals to respond to some certain calls for service.
Okay. Well, I'm in agreement with that, and I think the police Met team does a great job, and I think that maybe having a mental health professional attached to that team is a great idea, and maybe it's a topic for discussion in a committee like Safe Neighborhoods, but I know last month we had two police officers shot, one very critically responding to a mental health call, in which they, they did everything right, but yet still had two police officers injured. I know some cities that have tried it where they're just sending out and creating a two-tier system of sending out mental health professionals or really having to call the police to act as guards for them in certain circumstances, which negates kind of that whole process. So if staff does come back with this, I want them to take the totality of those experiences into place. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. And now, Mr. Hewat, go ahead with your look ahead.
We will wrap up very quickly with a look ahead. We're rounding the corner. Internally, our budget process has started for next fiscal year. I feel like it has not stopped this year, and that's fine. We're excited to continue to be able to address the different community priorities and the city council goals. In looking ahead specifically to PSVS, it'll be year three of the implementation. Again, as Mr. McKeegan alluded to, although we didn't cover our early revenue projections for next year, we do see some signs where we do anticipate some modest revenue growth. As we come to you in the budget process, you will likely see new position requests in PSVS and a few beyond that fund, but I think what you'll see is that they will be limited to those positions that are going to really be focused on driving measurable outcomes, specifically tied to the priorities that this council and the community have set. There will be a continued emphasis on public safety per the priorities of the measure and the city council goals. As we look to the capital side, we do anticipate, again, more projects, especially on the park side, focused again on those neighborhood-centric type of areas. So again, that's something that you'll likely see from staff in our recommendations. We do anticipate that those previously approved positions and programs, specifically in PSVS, will be funded and budgeted next year. And then we look to economic areas in our local park system, as well as our reserves and other fiscal-related items as being some of those areas where you'll probably see a bit more focus. So just kind of wanted to give you some early thoughts where staff is. We do anticipate this process to be a bit less compressed than last budget cycle, as several of you were aware, last year it was pretty quick, and there was a lot of information coming at you in a very short amount of time based upon some changes we had to make due to COVID issues. We do anticipate engaging the community a bit more this year. We are actually finalizing some plans right now that we'll likely be announcing pretty soon to do some engagement sessions, so I look forward to unveiling those soon. We will also have several new departments that'll be presenting before you, so you see some new faces up here. We did add some new departments this last budget cycle, so as we get into the budget presentation side of things, you will see some new faces up here in terms of presenting their budgets. You know them otherwise. Again, we've already received feedback tonight. It's certainly welcome now and throughout the budget process. Again, based upon some feedback last year, we are certainly wanting to remain engaged moving forward in this process. Last slide, I promise, is the budget calendar, and this is not comprehensive. This is just to kind of give you a timeline of where we're at, where we're going. Through the end of March, our departments will be developing their budgets for next year. We do anticipate an oversight committee meeting in late March, and then we do anticipate probably two or three of those meetings to review those proposals. We will come before you on May 5th to present the proposed budget this year, have a couple of noon budget workshops on the 10th and the 7th, and then this year, the last meeting in June is actually on the 16th, so a bit earlier than we would normally bring the budget to adopt, but that's where the calendar fell this year, so that is where this council has anticipated to review those final numbers for adoption. Attached to your staff report is a long list of the technical language that we'll put in place, the different programs, project staffing, and other allocations that I have outlined here this evening. Staff behind me and myself are happy to answer any questions you may have, and then I'll step away for a moment and come back if there are any further questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hewat. Councilmember Arias, now or after we go to the public?
My comment was actually going to be about the guests that we have. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hewat, Mr. Clegg, and now, City Clerk. Would you please call the public speakers?
The first speaker is Mr. Eddie Lane.
And just a reminder, we have three minutes per speaker, 15 minutes per topic. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. I'm Eddie Lane. I'm with the Sierra Club. I'm speaking regarding the proposed allocation of $19 million of PSVS funding on today's agenda. I'm only discussing this PSVS funding for parks allocated since the passage of Measure N, not general funds or funding, or funding from other sources or not ongoing staffing. Among the priorities were number 12, enhancing amenities throughout the community, and 13, enhancing neighborhoods through additional code enforcement and improved park maintenance. Sadly, thousands of taxpayers in Bakersfield's central core have been and continue to be severely short-changed. On July 15, 2020, there was a special city council workshop to address questions raised during the fiscal year 2021 budget process regarding parks. Diane Hoover presented a 45-slide PowerPoint presentation. The PSVS allocation information attached to my letter, which is dis-distributed, is based on that presentation by Ms. Hoover. Over $17 million has been allocated to Mesa Marin and Kaiser Permanente. That's over 70, 87% of the total. After that workshop, there was a front-page article in The Californian, I have, I have them all here, I keep them, and the city manager was quoted as saying that we would have, $8.2 million would be provided to 18 parks during a two-year period. We've heard tonight that there's some progress, but what happened at last week's, or two weeks ago's, PSVS committee meeting? There was no detailed listing of the parks. After a request from a committee member, a list was provided at the February 11 meeting. 2.9 million is recommended for 10 parks, not the 18 parks mentioned in July, and that's less than half of the 8.2 million that was, that was indicated would be provided this year. Urban core needs have been documented again and again. I'm passing out pictures from the uplands of the Kern. At this point, it's more of a city dump. $0 recommended. Two acres of parkland next to Martin Luther King Junior Park have been discussed publicly. $500,000 to purchase those. Zero recommendations today. What opportunities have there been for public involvement and suggestions regarding today's $19 million? What community needs assessment has been done? What options? What options have been presented to the public and the committee? You've got a, you've got a process here for possible funding. This was on the 8th, about a unique program. That's great, but that's about possible funding. How about the $19 million that you have before you now? With these, we need to have opportunities for robust, robust citizen involvement. We not, we do not need to continue to neglect parks, especially for the urban core, because that's what's happening at the current time. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
We have Mr. Mike. Turn-up seat.
We have Mr. Mike Turnipseed.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Members of the council, Michael Turnipseed. I wish I was as enthusiastic as Mr. Lane was tonight. We're looking tonight, and I have many things to talk about, but I'm going to have to change where I thought. I've got so many notes on the side aisle now. First of all, where is the audit from 2020 on Measure N? We're eight months later, and we haven't seen an audit yet. And that's just financial audit. I'd like to see the actual return on investment that staff mentioned earlier. I've never seen a return on investment to our community for our investments. We still have to worry about capping ongoing costs. There still seem to be that budget creep. I've had conversations with Mr. Clegg and three council members yesterday about the idea of a 10-year strategic plan with buckets of money and strategic planning. I didn't hear any talk about that tonight. Deferred maintenance list? I have been asking since before the November end election to see a deferred maintenance list for the city, and it's never been presented one. And any Measure N funds, and I've talked to the three councilmen yesterday about this, and Mr. Clegg, you should have a pot of money. I proposed to Mr. Clegg a plan that basically has seven pots of money: police and fire, economic development in disadvantaged community investment, city infrastructure, quality of life, homeless and low-income housing, a pot of money for council members based on need to spend money in their wards for their own projects, and finally, a fund for the future. All three councilmen yesterday talked about, we want to do something really big. Well, you better start saving your pennies if you want to do something really big. You're talking 50, 60, 70 million dollar projects or something, and now you're just reallocating and spending it. You had extra revenue. That should have been put away into that fund. So the real question is going, I guess, to be, is two years, we're doing the same allocation process we've had in the past because you don't have a strategic plan. I know Mr. Clegg says he has one, but we haven't been able to go back and forth yet. I've seen his goals. I'm good with that. But we're getting to March. Budget season's starting. There needs to be a roadmap going forward to see that there is actual benefit to the Measure N spending. And another comment, since we sat here three hours and 20 minutes to get our opportunity to talk, and there's 15 minutes available, we should be able to use the entire 15 minutes if there's two of us or five of us. Thank you much for your time. I got 10 seconds left.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
We have Ms. Ridley Patel. Riddy, my apologies.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself, and go ahead and lower the mic a little.
Sorry, city clerk. Before you start the time, I want to make clear that no matter what I say, I get the full three minutes. Correct? Correct, Mayor Go?
You are free to speak and observe the policies that we spoke about earlier.
Okay. I'm tired of [BLEEP]. Put your money where your mouth is. Stop talking about unhoused residents in this classist fascist way, because you all know that there are 4,000 vacant housing units in Bakersfield alone and 1,500 unhoused members in all of Kern County. It costs $30 million to fix. Put your money where your mouth is, Andre Gonzalez and Eric Arias, especially as members of my own party. You both are a joke to the Democratic Party. Finally, all of you have been complicit in the Kern oil and gas ordinance and refused to speak out on an ordinance that would add 67,000 oil and gas wells in Kern County while 100% affecting the most marginalized communities in Bakersfield, specifically your districts, Democratic leaders of Kern County. You guys can choose to be complicit in this, but this blood will be on your hands. These communities are dying of cancer. These children are dying of cancer, and you guys can't grow a [BLEEP] backbone. It's disgusting. Lastly, defund the [BLEEP] police as a step to abolition. What the [BLEEP] is my council member, what the [BLEEP] is my council member Bruce Freeman saying about the Riverwalk Park?
No.
Ms. Patel. Oh, no, 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 no. I am an adult. You can clutch your pearls, but I get to say what I want. Clutch your pearls on your own, Mayor Go.
Recession. Okay, Ms. Patel, go ahead and come back, and you have 1 minute and 29 seconds.
Can you commit here to use $30 million, the money that you have, $15 million here, over $54 million in the reserves, to fix homelessness in Bakersfield instead of making their, using their labor to clean up [BLEEP] in the city by not giving them housing? Can you commit to that? Are you going to spew some more [BLEEP] with milquetoast neoliberalism and not do anything to get to the root of the issue? And don't act like I'm crazy. There are articles in The Times, The Guardian, everything that knows how to fix unhoused issues in cities. Will you do it? I have 53 seconds on the clock. I want an answer.
Ms. Patel, go ahead and continue.
No, no, no. I have 44 seconds. I'll wait here. I don't give [BLEEP]. I want an answer.
Ms. Patel, we don't engage in conversation like this. Go ahead, and you have 34 seconds. Go ahead.
I'll [BLEEP]. I'll use the 30 seconds to make clear that there is $30 million that could be used to fix homelessness in all of Kern County right now. Over 4,000 vacant units in Bakersfield alone that could house everyone. I don't want to hear some [BLEEP]. I want actual things done. Both of you can't even speak out against a [BLEEP] ordinance that doesn't even allow for environmental review when the California Democratic Party specifically says no new fossil fuel infrastructure. Get a [BLEEP] backbone.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Didn't realize that I was already plugged in there. You know, there were just a couple of things in the comments that I wanted to touch base on. And one of the things is that something that I've noticed is, you know, we're addressing some of the deferred maintenance issues in some of our local parks, which I think is absolutely necessary, and it's wonderful that we're able to get to that. One of the frustrations that I have and I've heard from community members is that, you know, it's great to have a new playground, but, you know, what about the need for additional lighting in the park, additional maintenance, ongoing costs for that maintenance, and staffing issues when it comes to, you know, cleaning out the restrooms and that sort of thing? I would love to have a thorough discussion as we head into the upcoming budget discussion to talk about those needs, because I think that what's important is that, you know, we continue to maximize and take care of our existing assets before we continue to build on new ones, especially on the periphery. So I think that that's something that I would like to kind of flesh out and talk about as we head into the budget. The other thing that I wanted to touch base on was the need-based investments in our community by ward. I think that that's something that has, and Councilmember Gonzalez actually enlightened me earlier, was that that's actually been a part of the budget already, that there's $350,000 that are allocated annually, I believe, for each ward, both wards one and two, if I'm not mistaken. And I would love to have a more robust conversation about potentially expanding that pot of money so that we can continue to address some of the decades of needed improvements in our infrastructure in both of those wards and potentially other wards that need that additional funding. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lane, thank you so much for being here tonight and for championing the cause of our urban parks. I'm right there with you. We need to do a lot more. And it's not just deferred maintenance. It's also about enhancements to our parks. We know that there's a high utilization rate in all of our parks, really, throughout the city, but certainly in the urban core. And so we need to look at not just a deferred maintenance plan, but also a bigger plan for enhanced amenities in our urban parks, particularly those in underserved neighborhoods. And so that's something that I'm looking forward to seeing. So, Mr. Clegg, if you can just, just very simply, for all of us, explain to us where we are in that deferred maintenance plan. So we talked about it a while back, and it was around $8 million. Where are we now? Where will we be after we adopt this tonight? And how are we going to finish the rest of the deferred maintenance?
Thank you, Councilmember. And I think it's worth noting that in the presentation last July, we said that it would take two additional fiscal years beyond the current to get to that $8 million list. So what the recommended action tonight moves that schedule up, it allocates $3 million towards that $8 million list now, and then it takes what's left for the next fiscal year or two fiscal years to be $5 million in deferred parks projects that were on that list.
So we could, if we want to, then, just take care of that $5 million in deferred maintenance next fiscal year?
I think this action tonight would put us in a position to potentially do that, yes.
I say let's do that. But I, of course, I'm just one council member here. The other thing I want to make sure that we're clear about throughout the community is that Measure N is not the only funding source for park projects. And so can you just, again, for the benefit of all of us in the community, just kind of articulate how we have been able to fund new parks? For example, the Lenell Brahma Park in Ward 1, for example, was funded primarily through a grant of $6 million, I believe. If you can kind of describe for us some of those opportunities that we've sought out and have been successful in receiving funding for?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. There are several different funding sources. We have our annual capital improvement plan that is typically funded through transient occupancy tax revenues, actually. And in this current year, we've funded about $1 million of park improvements roughly from our capital funding sources. We also have park improvement funds that are collected as development occurs. I think if you look at new greenfield development, those fees are collected for, let's say, a new park for a brand-new development. But actually, as infill occurs, we're also collecting those fees and able to do park improvements and park build-outs in other parts of town that aren't seeing larger developments. So we do have, again, our transient occupancy taxes help fund our capital program, park improvement funds help fund our capital program, and then we leverage grants as much as possible. And so we have gone after grants. The Lenell Brahma Grant was actually a $3 million grant to build out that park, but also, as we've discussed, $3 million in the federal grant for the Kaiser Permanente Sports Village. We look at city funds as being leveraged to get those grant funds. There's often match requirements. And then ultimately, we do have the PSVS funds as well for park projects.
Great. And I think as we continue this conversation, clearly, I will be number one advocate for more funding for urban parks, perhaps number two after Mr. Lane, and right there beside Councilmember Arias. But I think for, just for context and for the sake of really sharing that information with the community during our budget sessions, I'd like us to present to community members that 10-year summary of spending for all of our respective wards, and really what has the city done to invest in all of our parks and specifically parks in different parts of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Any other requests to speak, colleagues? Vice Mayor.
I move staff's recommendation on this item.
You have a motion. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Aye.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Councilmember Freeman, can you unmute?
Aye.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and mayor statements.
I don't see any requests to speak, so Councilmember, now they're lighting up. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you. Couple referrals to staff. I put it on the app a couple of days ago, but there's been a dump of a bunch of cardboard on the southwest corner of Wybelle and Hosking. Maybe the clean team's getting out there tomorrow, but if we could send somebody out, I'd appreciate it. Also graffiti on the northwest corner of Wybelle and Loyelton. It's a couple spots on the city sump fence. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Councilmember Arias.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. I was contacted this past week by Sally Westlake, who's a representative from State Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lara's office. They're reinvigorating a program that provides really low-cost auto insurance specifically to new drivers in an effort to, you know, take young uninsured motorists off of the streets. I thought it would be worthy to have her come and chat with us and see how we could be partners in that and making sure that we keep our streets safe. So I would like to make a referral to staff to look into working with her on getting her in upcoming council meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I have one referral, and it looks like I'm reading a book here. So, every 10 years, the city is required to complete a redistricting process following the census. This is a significant project with significant impacts. It requires detailed analysis and public input. The state has created new guidelines for redistricting that make this even more complicated. I would like to refer this issue of redistricting to the Ledge and Lit Committee and have staff provide the committee with a review of the criteria for redistricting, the process, steps, a timeline for completion, and resources necessary to carry this out, including refreshments after we're done.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I don't see any other requests to speak. And with that, we're adjourned at 8:51.